use towers to be built behind Union Station. While another group, Grimshaw with Gruen, wants development more spread out towards the L.A. River and the 101 freeway. Metro, which bought Union Station last year, says artwork alone won't determine the winner. Each group's written master plan is more important.
Union Station will truly be a central hub, not just for the city, the region, but for the state.
Metro is expected to make its recommendation this summer. Upon approval, the official master planning process could be completed in two years. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Metro officials hope to unveil the all-new Union Station in the year 2050. Nearly a year ago, Los Angeles police shot and killed an unarmed 27-year-old autistic man they believe to be reaching for a weapon. Now, a year later, Rasha Goel tells us how the Los Angeles Police Department and the Autistic Society of Los Angeles are working together to help the two groups better understand each other.
I ripped a jacket, hold it so close like a map. Cut too close, said I could crack up.
Rio Wile is an autistic student and one who is excited to share his rapping talent. He is also excited to meet and learn some safety skills in a one-on-one interaction with an LAPD officer. He is among the 100 students with autism who are attending Mission Possible 2012, an event aimed to raise autism awareness.
Kids with autism are also more likely to be bullied or victimized in other ways. We want them to know that they can come to law enforcement for help.
We trained LAPD officers and L.A. County sheriffs to have experiential activities that help them understand what autism is and feels like.
Through hands-on workshops, students partnered up with officers to learn about police procedures and asking for help.
I'm excited because I want them to learn about autism.
Having this event gets them to understand who is a police officer, who are safe people to talk to.
Officials say Mission Possible 2012 is geared towards clearing the mismatching of perspectives between autistic individuals and the LAPD. For example, by familiarizing students with LAPD police cars, they have a better understanding that the LAPD is here to help them and not necessarily take them away.
Kids who don't stop when they're told to stop, right? That's a problem for anyone. It's more likely to happen if someone has autism and they're not accustomed or able to follow commands in the time expected.
When we come across situations or circumstances where there's an unknown factor, we stop, slow down and think, and we recall, oh, this may be a situation of autism, so we can approach it better.
An approach that will help strengthen the relationship between law enforcement and those it protects. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
L.A.'s Pico Union District is home to a large population of Latino immigrants, and so it is especially significant that an intersection there has been named for a man many of L.A.'s El Salvadoran residents consider a leader, a martyr, and an inspiration. "Let my life be a seed of freedom, let my death for the liberation of my people," words spoken by Archbishop Oscar Romero of San Salvador El Salvador in March of 1980, just two weeks before he was gunned down by the Salvadoran army. The life and deeds of Romero, who spoke out courageously in defense of human rights, have inspired many the world over. And here in Los Angeles, members of the Central American community honored his legacy by successfully lobbying to name a street corner after Romero, that corner at the intersection of Vermont Avenue and Pico Boulevard.
Monsignor Romero is like Gandhi, is like Cesar Chavez, is like Martin Luther King for us.
For me, as a person, do something good. Every time they thinking on the poor person, they're thinking of the rich, always thinking of the poor.
Councilman Ed Reyes was instrumental in helping to bring about the renaming of the intersection as Monsignor Oscar A. Romero Square.
He is a heroic figure in the Central American community, the Salvadoranos. He was essentially assassinated for speaking up for justice for the Salvadoran community, Salvadoran people.
Most Salvadorans entered the United States as refugees during the '80s, when their nation was in the midst of a civil war. Today, Salvadorans have surpassed 1 million in Los Angeles County alone.
We are celebrating an incredible man who gave his life for the people of El Salvador and for social justice. But at the same time, we're celebrating and saying that we're proud of the Salvadoran American community in Los Angeles.
It is a reaffirming of the spirit and the struggles of the Salvadoran community and reinforce a positive message about what is justice and what we can do in a positive way to promote change.
In the words of the Monsignor, "Peace is generosity, it is right, and it is duty," words that continue to inspire a whole new generation. Imagine having people throw soda cans, trash bags, and food scraps in your home. You probably wouldn't stand for it. As Rasha Goel reports, that's how thousands of Angelenos feel about those whose litter ends up in the L.A. River.
Volunteers from across the city donated their time to help clean up one of the city's historical resources, the Los Angeles River. As part of an ongoing effort, Friends of the Los Angeles River, a nonprofit organization also known as Folar, hosted the 23rd Annual La Gran Limpieza, the Great L.A. River Cleanup.
Seen ducks with trash around their necks here, all kinds of stuff. So we come down every year and help clear it out at this time.
Thousands of people showed up throughout the 15 locations across the river to clean up. Officials say tons of garbage are pulled from the river every year. Last year alone, 25 tons of trash were brought in.
If you leave something on the street, it'll get washed into the river. So it's not even people coming to the river and littering in the river, it's people just dropping stuff on the street.
And it's that stuff that eventually gets drained into the L.A. River and affects the environment. Councilmember Tom Labange was also on site to offer a helping hand.
People from all over, from the South Bay, to the Central City, to the Valley, to anyone who lives along the river have come and made a difference.
People shouldn't be littering, they should be cleaning and help the environment.
It's a lesson Angelenos of all ages can learn from.
This river gives to me every day, so I'd like to just give back a little bit.
In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Great L.A. River Cleanup is also working with Councilmember Ed Reyes on his L.A. River Revitalization Master Plan. A New Year's Eve shooting of a young boy remains unsolved, sinking trees outside the Police Administration building discovered by some downtown residents, and Cinco de Mayo at the El Pueblo Historical Monument. These stories and more in City Beat. Councilmembers Jan Perry and Bernard Parks are hoping a $50,000 reward approved by the City Council will help the LAPD find the person responsible for the murder of a 14-year-old boy in South Los Angeles. Relatives of Jude Emerson Burns Jr., who was shot multiple times in front of 1349 West 61st Street on New Year's Eve, came to City Hall to ask for help in solving the case.
Jude was standing outside, waiting on the fireworks show while talking to his friend on the cellular phone. A car approached abruptly and started shooting.
Potential witnesses are asked to call 1-877-LAPD-247, and you can remain anonymous. Street improvements at Marshall Court in San Pedro are finally completed. Councilmember Joe Buscaino recently joined members of the city's Department of Public Works to showcase the 420 feet of improvements between Sepulveda Street and Summerlin Place adjacent to the Bandini Canyon Trail Park. They include construction of new pavement, sidewalks, and gutters, the installation of street lighting, and construction of a bulkhead wall with irrigation and landscaping. Councilmember Jan Perry honored members of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council who helped maintain the lawn of the Police Administration Building at a time when the city had no funding to do so. Volunteers dedicated one Saturday a month to weeding, pruning, and picking up trash. One volunteer even uncovered a major landscaping problem.
Our trees had been sinking into the ground. And in response to her diligence, the city staff discovered that our contractor used an incorrect soil mix.
That problem will soon be corrected at no additional cost to the taxpayer. As for maintaining the park space, the city has since found funding for the Department of Recreation and Parks to take over those duties. The El Pueblo Historical Monument was the site of a big three-day Cinco de Mayo celebration which commemorates Mexico's victory over French forces in Puebla Mexicaw in 1862. But the Mexican celebration has evolved into something much larger.
Cinco de Mayo has become a celebration. As you can see, we have people from Guatemala, we have people from El Salvador, from every country in Latin America. And Cinco de Mayo has become really a facility for all Latinos that live here in the USA.
The anniversary was marked at El Pueblo with popular and traditional music, dancing, and food. We take for granted that not everyone can easily get their hands on Girl Scout cookies. Soldiers deployed overseas recently received the special treats as a surprise as they passed through LAX. A human conveyor belt made up of Girl Scouts and military troops moves one box of thin mints at a time into the Bob Hope Hollywood USO at the Los Angeles International Airport. The USO facility at LAX is meant to be the soldiers' home away from home as they fly to and from deployments serving our country. To thank them, the Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles surprised the soldiers with the special delivery.
We're helping the military giving thin mints.
Making a human conveyor belt for the soldiers.
It's a gesture these U.S. Marines deeply appreciate.
All these people here, it lifts our spirits, and even though we miss our families, these people are here supporting us, and it's really a good feeling.
I remember a few years ago, like during the Vietnam era, even though I wasn't born, but I hear stories about how people didn't like the military that much. I think it's great that we're a part of people like us again, and that we're part of the community, and I'm just proud that we can be the people's fighters for them, you know?
USO, or United Services Organization, is a private nonprofit organization that provides morale and recreational services to members of the U.S. military. And it's in that same spirit that the Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles make this loving donation. And who knows, these members of the Girl Scout troop could one day become a member of the military troop.
I was a Girl Scout, Iberia, California. I don't remember my troop number, unfortunately, it was many, many years ago. But a lot of good, a lot of good leadership traits were learned and teamwork learned as a Girl Scout.
Teamwork needed on this day as Girl Scouts work shoulder to shoulder with servicemen and women to make sure those who fight in the front lines have a little taste of home. The Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles also donate cookies to other charities and organizations such as the L.A. Regional Food Bank. In this week's list of things to do, a free concert at the library, a walking history lesson around MacArthur Park, and an LAPD preview car show. Make your way over to the Edendale Branch Library on Saturday, May 19th, to enjoy a family-friendly concert of classical music with the Andean Ensemble, featuring the seven-stringed, silvery-toned viola de more, performed by Adriana Zoppo. The free concert is from noon to 1:00 p.m. The Edendale Branch Library is located at 2011 West Sunset Boulevard in Echo Park. Go to lapl.org and click on Locations and Hours to find the page for the Edendale Branch Library. Valley Traffic Advisory Council and LAPD Valley Traffic Division are hosting a VIP pre-show on Saturday, May 19th, in advance of the 9th Annual Still Saving Lives Car Show on June 2nd. The VIP pre-show will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the top level of the Best Buy parking lot located at 4500 Van Nuys Boulevard in Sherman Oaks. The LAPD, the Los Angeles Fire Department, and the L.A. Sheriff's Department are co-sponsoring the event. More info can be found at btac-btd.org. Take a folk art walk at MacArthur Park on Sunday, May 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You'll get to experience MacArthur Park's rich history as you take the walk led by Carmelo Alvarez, a longtime youth advocate with strong roots in MacArthur Park. Carmelo will focus on the various historic monuments and cultural landmarks found in the area. MacArthur Park is located at 2122 West 7th Street. RSVP requested to RSVP@kfam.org. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us, I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow us and like us on Facebook. We leave you now with the sights and sounds of the Cinco de Mayo Celebration at the El Pueblo Historical Monument. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, May 15th. I'd like to welcome everybody to your City Hall, your council chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Please come down. With that said, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. President.
Then let's call a roll.
Alacon Buscaino, Cardenas Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Corret, La Bange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosnol, Zion, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Labange seconds. Next?
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, Mr. Corret seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone to please rise for the salute of the flag led by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could ask somebody to rise and please put your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. At this time, Madam Clerk, why don't we go through the agenda? If you could please start off with the first section of items.
Mr. President, there are a number of items that request to be continued. Item number 1F is requested to be continued to June 15. Item 1J is requested to be continued to May 29. Item 14 is requested to be continued to May 29. And item 2 has been requested to be continued to May 23rd.
Okay, without objection.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to hold 1K for Mr. Parks.
Okay.
For...until he arrives. Yeah, thank you.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I think we still have one item left, though, that we can vote on?
Yes, and also, Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety reports that item 1A may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay, without objection. So with the other, with the remaining item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate
11 ayes.
Okay, let's move to the next section.
Items 3 through 10 are items of which public hearings have been held.
Okay, now, I've been informed that at Mr. Alacon's request, that he'd like to refer item 3 back to committee.
And that would be to the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee.
Yes, Madam Clerk, so without objection. Members, specials? Mr. Englander?
8 and 10, please.
Mr. Garcetti?
7, please.
No more specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item, let us...
Excuse me, Mr. President, I believe there was a request to receive and file item 5 by Mr. Wezar.
Okay, then without objection. Let's prepare the vote, let's...Mr. Corret?
I'd like to call item number 9 special.
I don't think so. Yeah, okay. Mr. Corret, item 9. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next section, Madam Clerk?
Items 11 through 22 are items of which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, which one of those items is connected to item 3?
Item 12.
Okay, so at the request of the Chair of Arts and Parks, we will refer this item back to commission, I mean, to committee as well. Okay, do we have cards?
Cards on items 13, 14, and 17.
Members, special? Okay, Mr. Buscaino calls 11 special. Do we have cards? Oh, we have cards on 13, 14, and 17, and that's it, right?
Correct.
Okay, let's open the roll, then. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Madam Clerk, let's go to the next section.
On the supplemental agenda, items 23 through 26 are items of which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Without objection. Any cards?
Cards on items 23 and 26.
Members, specials? Items 23 through 26? No specials? Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Where does that bring us to at this point, Madam Clerk?
General public comment or presentations?
Okay, let's call, are we ready for the, in fact, first I want to call on Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is just a very brief presentation, but I wanted to introduce a great visitor, Tom LaBange, who I think biked to work today. I saw his bike downstairs, and that's why he's in his casual gear today. He's usually our great town caller here and somebody who welcomes visitors from out of town. But we have a visitor from a very exotic place here today, Idaho, who is visiting. Colleen Babcock, who is the mother of Angela Mota, who is my great Hollywood deputy, is visiting Los Angeles as part of her vacation from Arco, Idaho. She grew up in Moore, Arco and Shelley, Idaho, which are rural towns in southeast Idaho, raising two children, KJ and Angela. Angela's here with her husband, Bill Babcock, in Arco. She started as a hairstylist, but went to school to become a bookkeeper for the local newspaper and became copy editor and office manager of the weekly community paper, and thus her activism started. And I wanted to present her in front of the council because we always welcome folks who have given to their neighborhoods, to their towns, to their cities, and Colleen is a great example of that. She's been involved in improving her small county of 2,900 residents for decades. Now, we can sit around here and say, "Our districts have 250,000 people," but we know that 2,900, they say the smaller the town, the more vicious the politics, and so it can be just as intense as we know at the local level. But she has fought hard in the early 80s. After the municipal pool's damage beyond repair, she worked to get a bond measure on the ballot to fund a community youth center and pool. She organized the Winter Rose Festival, which involved a parade, snow sculpture contests and festival activities, celebrating geothermal resources utilized by a local rose producer. And she was one of the first women to break into the Lions Club and was a leader in the organization for years, organizing youth ski lessons and eye exam drives. And after the passing of her husband, Bill, she took over treasurer duties for the Craters of the Moon National Monument Foundation. So, Mr. LaBange, when you're ready to visit the Craters of the Moon National Monument Foundation, you got a friend right here. They support the National Park Service and operating 53,000 acres. We might only, we might have 250,000 people per district, but she's got 53,000 acres of volcanic formations and lava flows right next door to her. And most recently, she spearheaded fundraising efforts to benefit a local family whose 27-year-old son became paralyzed after a car accident. She helped the family operate their small business while attending to their son's therapy needs, and she's very proud of her two children, who both look to her still as an example of a selfless and spirited individual. So we wanted to welcome you, Colleen Babcock, the City of Angels, on this occasion of your visit to the John F. Raro Council Chambers. Please congratulate her for her activism and welcome her to L.A. Do you want to say anything? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Okay, what we'll do now, we'll begin public comment, uh, public comment, general public comment. Sean Murphy, Cheryl Eickleis, please come forward. And I think it's George Abraham.
Good morning, Mr. President. City Council, you missed my birthday on the 24th, Mr. President. I know you had a big, I know you had a fall. I forgive you. The streets need to be repaid. The city has to be, to operate normal. We don't want any more layoff, we don't want any layoffs, is what I'm trying to say. And I have some flyers, 26 flyers for my benefit concert to the city, to the City Council. Sergeant Ross, would you pass them?
Sergeant, could you please get the materials that Mr. Murphy has in his hands?
And I'm glad you're back at City Council, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Just be careful.
Next time, I will. Anyway, happy belated birthday, Sean. Cheryl, please come forward, followed by, I believe, George Abrahams.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Eickley, and I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles. I live in District 4, and I speak for myself today. It's been a while since I've been in the chambers. I've been out fighting Wall Street as hard as I can, probably about 80 to 100 hours a week that I volunteer to fight foreclosures. So I have no families with me here today, but we are contacted on a daily basis by families who are being fraudently foreclosed on and illegally evicted. I guess there's been a new report that's come out that says that Occupy Los Angeles has cost the city $4.7 million. And I'd just like to say, and I've said it before, freedom of speech is not free. All the rights come at a cost, and I've said it before, Kent State, when we look back in history, they're not talking about the cost of the ammunition that they used to kill those children, those students. They don't talk about the damage to the lawn. What they talk about is the freedoms that we've gained for standing up for what's right. And I know Mr. Alarcon, Councilman Alarcon, has asked for a report on how much have the big banks cost the city of Los Angeles? And as far as I know, that report has not come back yet. But that is the reason why Occupy Los Angeles fights. That's the reason why there was an Occupy Wall Street movement in the first place, is because there are big banks that are fraudently stealing homes from families, stealing money from pension funds, stealing monies from local municipalities. What we really need to talk about is the cost of Wall Street in our communities, the blight that they caused in the streets and in our cities. That's what we need to focus on, not a couple of young people standing up for what they believe in, for what they believe is right. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get, again, I believe, is Abrahams, George, and then Fran Rittenbach, written back? And then we'll go to the Valley for, to Donna Peerman. Good morning, sir.
Hi. This is the Save Hollywood rattlesnake, and this is the Hollywood Community Plan. Now, you can see from the puncture marks that the Hollywood Community Plan is snakebit. We have been putting facts, data and expert analysis into the administrative record, proving that the Hollywood Community Plan is fatally flawed, that the SCAG projections are inconsistent with the census data, the courts have ruled that facts trump projections, that an increase in street traffic is unmitigated, that there is no funding for infrastructure and therefore unmitigated, that transit oriented development is a financial failure, that the build-out maximums necessary for an increase in zoning have not occurred, that a land use element that is growth inducing is contradictory to the general plan framework that is growth neutral, that the downzoning option was never properly considered. Left untreated, the Hollywood Community Plan will die. The only question is, will it die in council or in the courts? None of us wants the no project option. The plan has some good elements in it, such as hillside protection, height limits and some downzoning. We want the plan to live. Send the plan back to City Planning Department to give it the antivenin to have these fatal defects corrected. Supporters of the plan have been trying to make this a numbers gain, hoping to induce the City Council to do a Thelma and Louise vote, to pass the plan in its current form. But for a plan that cannot survive legal challenge, the number of supporters is irrelevant. The only numbers that count are the number of people who are aware that if the council does approve the plan in its current form, it will only result in unnecessary cost to the city and delay getting a plan in place that will survive legal scrutiny and will serve the interests of both residences, residents and businesses in Hollywood.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Fran Rickenbach. It's rumored that our message about the flawed data in the Hollywood Community Plan is finally getting through, but that's not good enough. Certainly, we enjoy the delay because it gives us more time to collect funds for our lawsuits. What's missing are your voices. Each and every one of you esteemed council members should have the opportunity to look hard at the facts in the Hollywood Community Plan and speak your mind on it. After all, this Hollywood Community Plan update is a template for updates already being crafted in several of your districts. Every community plan must eventually be updated. If this plan goes forward in its current form, it'll be years in litigation before the city is forced to correct it and recirculate the EIR. That's a lot of time and money fighting and losing. The smart money is on doing the right thing now. Correct the plan with the addition of a downzoning alternative, recirculate that EIR. Your vote could make that happen. As a result, you may get to see your community plans updated in your lifetime. People for Liveable Communities has organized to watch over this plan. SaveHollywood.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the Valley now for Donna Peerman.
Okay, hello? This is Donna, Donna Peerman. Anyway, and when I said, I wanted to say, well, fast, when I said in 13, vote for 13, I meant, remember in 2013, think of number 13, Eric Garcetti for mayor? Anyway, I brought up the issue of closing the Van Nuys teleconference to the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and they're going to make a resolution to speak to you to save the Van Nuys City Hall teleconference. If you care about the Valley, you will keep it open. The council and its staff gets to have the use of 84 cars, are read. They have their own gas station, and what I hear, council members have unlimited mileage. So, I would say they're always working, so therefore they shouldn't have to write it down where they're going. When you eliminate an unnecessary perks, isn't that over $178,000 salary enough to have your own cars? Exception, Councilman Eric Garcetti, has no cars listed, being paid by us, so he must lease his own car, electric car. We need the City Council to stop throwing our money away first for fee waivers. I mean, for a long time, they had a lot of fee waivers, and then now, and the CRA, of course, we knew about that. But now I hear somebody else is going to be taking over for the CRA, so, and we're not out of the woods on that one. The City Council has shown they're not employee friendly, always asking for concessions from the city employees. They take little concessions themselves, but they can afford to do so, so that's why they do so. Unlike the hardworking city employees, who should be commended for all the hard work that they do, all public and, uh, employ, uh, public servants do, and most of them do a fantastic job, so I really think they should be commended, and they should get a thing from the City Council. Anyway, our mayor wants to take it from the taxpayers and, uh, and the employees, and in the meantime, think about what the mayor gets.
Thank you. Okay, I want to call Mr. Herman, and I think it's Roberto Figueroa and Michael Carrion.
How do we report waste, fraud and theft? Get involved, L.A. Get involved. We constituents, those of us within the public, we must get involved. Our governor proposes to increase our taxes at a time when the majority of us, whether we're in Beverly Hills, Boyle Heights, East Los Angeles, we're going through tough economical times, are we not? So we say to ourselves, how do we become more cost efficient? How do we save from going over our budget? Well, let's ask the mayor to be, the mayor to come. I support, at this point, which could change, but if you listen to Zuma Dog, Mr. Salzberg, in his commentaries on YouTube, you will see that Zuma Dog has always been right on subjects of matter pertaining to our livelihoods. He was efficient, effective and responsible to communicate to you, the public, we, the public, that Zuma Dog for mayor, you got my vote. Why? Because he has been attentive. Well, Mr. Garcetti, there's still time for you. There is still time. But show me what you can do for our community in Boyle Heights when it comes to what I ask in response for activity in Boyle Heights, East Los Angeles, because the minority live there. Our schools are rundown, our schools have not improved in education, and according to what Mr. Brown proposes to do, it's terrible at a time like this.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Felicito Roberto Figueroa. Please come forward, followed by Michael Carrion.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. One quick question. Are you in the position to give out an explanation?
You just make your statement. We don't comment generally during public...
So I'm in the wrong place?
Well, just let us know what your issue is, and we'll have somebody speak to you when you finish.
One more quick comment. Are you going to call me a liar if I say to you that you are infringing in my human, my human rights? Are you going to call me a liar?
Let him finish, and then...
Are you going to call me a liar if I make this comment that there are no cameras in my restroom or my room? Are you going to call me a liar? And if you are... Then, then you disgust me. You are disgusting. Every single one of you, you should be ashamed of yourselves, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. That's it.
Michael Carrion.
Mr. President?
Yes, and Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. President, for the people who are watching our council meetings, the items that the council members are allowed to discuss are items that are agendized. If, for example, somebody comes up to the podium and they're right to speak freely to this council, if it's not agendized, then it would be outside of the rules for us to dialogue back and forth on that matter. Because we are a body that follows Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act and also the City Charter, then the fact of the matter is that we deliberate here on the floor on items that were actually agendized. If it's not agendized, people have the freedom to speak on whatever they would like to speak on, but at the same time, unfortunately, the council is not allowed to dialogue back and forth on an item that's not agendized. Is that along those lines, Mr. City Attorney?
Just one little tweak, they have the right to talk about anything that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
Yes, subject matter of the city, thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. City Attorney Michael Carrion, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Arminik Norjanian. Michael?
What Mr. Cardenas forgot to tell you is that you can respond within 50 words or less, but yet when it goes over, nobody stops you, when it's convenient to the councilmen and women. I'm here in the sort of great retaining slope, or whatever they're calling it. I have a question, maybe somebody here can answer it. Mr. Garcetti sits on that board, and Mr. Busciano sits there, sat there the other day. If you guys can get authorization to build Farmer Field in less than a year, why can't we get a retaining wall done in Alserino in eight years? Wow, everybody's quiet today. Nobody can answer the question. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people are either reading the paper or on their computer. Then they catch the tail end of something, and they get all upset because they feel their feelings were hurt. This is what upsets us. When we come here and you don't pay attention to us. We've got Ms. Perry running for mayor, but she's not paying attention. So I wonder when, if she ever gets elected, will she pay attention or just ignore people? Got her attention now. I'm not here to play games. I will put you on Front Street. I'm here to ask, why can't we get this... I'm here to ask, why can't we get this wall built in Alserino? It's one little wall. Soto Street is our Beverly Boulevard, is our Wilshire Boulevard, and you closed it off to pedestrians. For eight years, it's been closed, and you don't open it. Across the street is mud. You can't walk across it, but nobody seems to give a rat's pawdut about it. You know what? Just because we're Latinos doesn't mean we don't have feelings.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael. Next is Mr. Arnold Sacks, followed by Mr. Norjanian. Mr. Norjanian, start moving up here. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, and thank you, Councilman Cardenas, for clarifying what we can say on this side of the mic and what the procedures are. So, in your clarification, you mentioned that items not on the agenda would not be spoken to by the council, but items on the agenda would be spoken to by the council. So, just out of curiosity, because we come up here sometimes and ask about items on the agenda, because that's part of the procedure, when's the last time somebody on this side of the microphone got an answer from a councilman regarding a question on an item on the agenda? You had the high-speed rail, and I've got something about that. You had the film tax credit. Oh, that was heard in committee, but I've got something about that. So, please, when you clarify like that, say, oh, by the way, the Brown Act says we don't talk about things not on the agenda, but we also don't talk about things on the agenda to the public if they ask questions. Because I've been coming here, like I said, a little over six years, and I can't remember, except to clarify or correct when somebody makes an egregious error. Somebody getting in dialogue with a person on this side of the mic, we've had corrections though, but we have never had anybody say, step up and tell the truth. Speaking of the truth, it's too bad Councilman Corretts is not here, because I wanted to comment on his remarks he made about the film tax credit, and he mentioned how he was disillusioned that the Battle of LA didn't get filmed in LA, but got filmed in Louisiana. And in this newspaper article, from the Daily Breeze, Bayes, from the 11th of March, the developer, the film producer, needed to have a freeway closed for a month in order to do the film. That's why he went to Louisiana, because they were willing to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Mr. Norjanian. Mr. Labange.
As we all, we welcome public comment. Often, I and other members go to the ropes on the side to meet with constituents when they have ideas, and we welcome that as well. And often, we call on Avak and others to help and assist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelenos. My name is Arminak Norjan, and I'm a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. I'm a, as such, I run for the seat of California State Assembly from South Central Los Angeles, 59th District. I ask the vast majority of Black and Hispanic voters, which I met, about 80,000 people, to vote for me as most progressive and most liberal candidate of all of us Democrats that run for the office. I propose to raise taxes against wealthy individuals, 50%, and also raise taxes against gasoline selling corporation and oil-producing manufacturers, 50%, in order to increase social spending, to keep social programs up and running. I build my campaign on principles of racial integration, social justice, technological revolution, and environmental protection. Those are important principles I stand on. I also will provide six-month free pregnancy leave for all Californian women. I propose to raise speed limit 20, on all Californian highways and freeways, you know, 20 miles up, in order to, you know, to promote business interests. Also, I propose to make same-sex marriage law of the land, and I propose also to introduce a comprehensive ban against so-called medical requirement dispensers, with ripoff substance abuses, and make Angelenos, message of Angelenos suffer with homelessness and loss of income. Also, as part of my campaign to fight wasteful spending, corruption, and alcohol mafia, I actually condemn overrated Los Angeles councilman wages of $178,000, and ask City Council members to cut those wages in half. I also ask Los Angeles council members to establish a comprehensive ban against...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Now, we'll go to the Valley. Mary Ann Fogler in the Valley. Mary Ann?
Hello. Yeah, I'm very procured by, procured by what the situation here is, that you're cutting back, in the meantime, you're not educating the public about obeying laws, and fortunately, you're all doing this gun-back thing. You're doing everything illegal as much as you can, and that, to me, is a crime right there. You people have become criminally-minded to allow people running red lights and allow yourselves to illegally buy guns for $100, $200, so that you can take away, erode away our rights to protect our country and people who are trying to kill us. We have a man who has now been abducted, and he's begging for his life. He said, no, with Al Qaeda. So, folks, the war is not over by a long shot. Don't surrender your weapons. This is exactly what they want to do, is create a communist system here. They want to have communism. They're using race as an issue to have everybody divided against one another, and we can't afford that. This is for the, for the security of our nation. So, I'm telling you, don't get taken by the politicians, okay? They're liars. What Obama said in his first election, he says now he's for gays. You know, you don't know what this guy's going to say. And I just saw in the 700 Club, he's allowing his, his American Department of Justice to continue selling weapons illegally so that they can blame the American people for it and take away our guns. Don't allow it to happen like the Holocaust, what my so-called friend did to me. It's called a...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, that concludes general public comment. Mr. Alacon for presentation.
Get in the picture. The camera's over there, over there. Okay. Yeah, there we go. I think you can stand anywhere, the camera will probably get you. This might get.
Councilmembers, it's, it's my tremendous pleasure and honor to bring to you the Warriors from Alamany High School basketball team, if you didn't notice. We, we are so fortunate to be able to honor teams that have had tremendous success, winning city championships and, and region championships. Well, I'm here to tell you that Alamany High School are the state champions in CIF 3-division basketball. They won in Sacramento. They won in Sacramento, and you would have thought it was home in Sacramento, because there were 400 students and family members who joined them in Sacramento to enjoy spectacular victory. The truth is that, you know, they're, they are, I remember working with Alamany High School just after the earthquake in 1994, when the school was essentially destroyed, and it had to be moved, and it took us years to relocate them across the street, right next to the San Fernando Mission. And, you know, a lot of people at the time were saying they might not be able to save Alamany High School. It was a tremendous financial hardship, but I want to thank the archdiocese for never giving up on Alamany High School, and I think this success is demonstrative of the tremendous resilience of Alamany High School. My sisters went to Alamany. My mother couldn't afford for me to go, but I have a tremendous connection, not only with family members who attended Alamany, but also with students of mine from Mary Immaculate who attended Alamany. So, let me tell you a little bit about this team. The championship capped off an outstanding season, where the Warriors finished with an impressive 33-4 overall record. The team's success is obviously no small part due to Coach Trey Meeks, who is in his seventh year as head coach of the Warriors. In fact, I believe, yes, the LA Times has made him Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach Meeks. In 2010, he coached the varsity team to the CIF finals, and in 2011, he coached the team to the CIF semifinals, and of course, this year, they won the state finals. Some of you might have caught the Warriors' victory in their CIF Southern Section Championship game against St. John Bosco High School. With a trip to the state finals on the line, KJ Muffett made a layup with 2.5 seconds remaining to win the game 62-61. KJ had missed 15 games during the season, but came back before the playoffs started and provided the clutch basket for his team. That's indicative of everybody contributing to this team. I am proud to welcome these student athletes to council today, congratulate them on their amazing season. We can sometimes forget that student athletes, like the championship Warrior squad, are a source of pride and inspiration for our communities in general. I would like to point out a couple of special considerations. As a teacher, I want to mention the academics as well. I want to congratulate Marques Coleman, senior, who is 2012 Second Team All-State, 2012 Daily News Player of the Year, 2012 Battle of the Valley All-Star MVP, but he's also received a scholarship to the University of Nevada with a 3.4 GPA. Max Gersi. Max Gersi is a senior. He was a 2012 co-MVP Mission League Player of the Year, 2012 CIF Division 3A Co-Player of the Year, 2012 Third Team All-State Scholarship to Rice University with a 3.6 GPA. Jericho Richardson is also a senior, Second Team All-Mission League, Second Team CIF Division 3A, and he has a scholarship to the University of Nevada for playing football. And finally, just to not leave this to just the seniors, I want to point out Rajwan Bear Henderson, who's a sophomore and made it to the Second All-Team Mission League, Second Team CIF Division 3A, Second Team All-State Sophomore Team, and is guaranteed that Alamany will be competitive for the next two years. Coach Trey Meeks, of course, is in his seventh season, as I mentioned, but was CIF Division 3A Coach of the Year, and as I mentioned, the Los Angeles Times Coach of the Year. You know, we are all proud of our students, and we don't give enough credit to students when they do the right thing. We're so quick to point out the negative things that young people get involved with. But today, we are here to celebrate some young people who came together as a community and fought for their community to be the best in the entire state of California. So, with that, it's my honor and privilege to introduce Coach Meeks, who coached the state's championship team for 2012. Oh, you didn't know that?
Oh, no, I didn't. What an honor to be here. We thank every one of you guys for giving us the opportunity to be presented with this prestigious award. These guys worked so hard to accomplish the goal that they set out from the beginning of the season, so we, we're just grateful to God and grateful to you guys for giving us the opportunity to be honored here today. Thank you.
So, with that, I do have certificates of recognition to all the players and the coaches, and again, we want to congratulate the Alamany Warriors on this tremendous accomplishment.
Before you conclude, we do have one, Councilman on the queue, Councilman Buscaeno.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Alacon, for bringing these fine champions to City Hall. I just want to stand and congratulate this great team. You are truly champions, not only in Warriors, not only on the court, but in the classroom too, which is great. You are all scholar athletes. I had an opportunity to visit Vermonday in my district in Watts, and what an amazing Catholic school in my district, and this was, this reminds me of the fine work, the teachers, Coach Meeks, you've instilled character, compassion, and commitment on the court, as well as off the court as well. So, congratulations to you and the team, and thank you, Mr. Alacon, for raising this, and bringing, raising this issue and bringing these champions to City Hall. And in light of, you know, our LA teams are all in the playoffs, you know, are you looking at the Clippers, the Lakers, as well as the Kings? Let's continue to root, not only for you, but also for our LA teams currently in the playoffs. Congratulations. We love you, and we're continuing to pray for you. Well done.
Councilman Alacon?
Buscaeno, who is extremely proud of his Italian heritage, reminds me of something I forgot to mention, and I should recognize the principal, Frank Ferry, who is also very proud of his Italian heritage. But the interesting thing that the students don't know is that Frank Ferry's god, grandmother was my third-grade teacher at Holy Rosary. So, they have a long history of teachers in the Ferry family, and the Northeast San Fernando Valley has a tremendous Italian heritage that Frank is very proud of. So, congratulations again to Alamany High School for their tremendous accomplishment.
Congratulations. Congratulations. See no one else on the queue? Madam Clerk?
Mr. President takes item, Council to items called special. The first item is Item 1C, called special for cards.
We do have several cards on Item 1C. Let's have Darrell Hansley come on up to the microphone, then have, okay, 1C.
Yes, I'm Darrell Hansley. I'm District 11. My case was started in 99, 1999, and I bought two permits, one for a carport and one for a swimming pool. I have the permit and, and the final permit signed, but the city seems to think that they misplaced theirs, and they won't allow mine to go into effect, or I haven't been able to talk to someone. And Representative Mr. Rosenthal's office went over to the Building Department with me, and they okayed the building permit and the sign-off, but I can't get the city inspectors to sign that off. And I've been signed off for 10 years or so, and here's my pool and carport. And I think that if they would look into it more, they would see everything, because I have the permit cards and the sign-offs. Thank you.
Are you down, sir?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenthal?
I want to sit with you about this. They should have signed off on it, obviously, and I'm sorry that you had to come down here. Let's talk on the side right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Councilman Rosenthal, we're going to go for a vote at this time, or do you want us to hold it on the table while you speak with them? All right. All right, we'll do that. We'll hold 1C on the table while Councilman confers with his constituents. We do have two other cards on 1E, Mr. Herman, I believe, and Gerard Castillo on 1E. And colleagues, as advised from the clerk, we will be voting on each item. So, this is 1E. Mr. Castillo, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Gerard Castillo. My address is 803 West Anaheim Street.
Good morning, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a continuance.
Okay, and...
And I wanted to show you, I got some pictures. And I wanted to show you, I got some pictures.
Okay, and do you know which council district you're in?
No.
Council District 15 is...
District 15. Councilor Buscaino?
Yes.
Okay. Just a moment, please. Would you like to offer him a continuance?
Yes, we met with Building and Safety, and Mr. President, Building and Safety wants us to proceed with this.
Proceed?
Yes.
So his request for continuance is not being...
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Please make your case, sir.
Yeah, I bought this property in 1998, and graffiti was already there, but it started getting bad, worse. And I had a bunch of young men do a drawing for me. Can I show you this?
Sergeant Arves, can you please pick up the documents? Mr. Castillo, please proceed. I just need to hear you on the record with microphones. It's important for you to speak into the microphone.
I gave him the pictures, and after, before, and before and after, so you could see them yourself. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and the councilor of the district is reviewing them now? Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
And now, I took the mural away. It's been a while.
Would you like to continue with your...
Well, I feel it's not fair, you know, to get cited for some art that these youngsters did for me. It's not graffiti. It was graffiti before, for eight years, and no one said anything to me.
Okay. So your appeal is to...
Well, right now, I don't have no mural. I took it away. It's been a while. But I wish I would have kept it, because it's very beautiful art. If you could see it yourself, I'd appreciate it if you'd take the time.
Okay, sir. Does that conclude your presentation, sir?
Pretty much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
So what do I do now?
Well, we'll be hearing from the councilor of the district. He has suggested that we continue moving forward, and we're going to follow his lead as the councilor of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Yes, 1C, we'd like to continue that for two weeks.
For two weeks?
Right.
Okay.
That's until May 29th, Mr. President.
That's May 29th. That's for 1C. Councilor Buscaino for 1E. We do have one more card, I believe it's Mr. Herman, then would like to speak afterwards? Sir Herman, would like to speak on 1E?
I was 1C, right?
Was it 1C? Because it looks like an E, but go ahead.
Sorry about that little curse of malfunction. Well, you've heard the comments, and I've made comments in regards to how Building and Safety and the way their regulations and their misuse of city ordinances, municipal codes. You see how simple things can distort a community when you have a community being impacted by the use and misuse of city ordinances? At a time as well, I sympathize with this gentleman about his art. Art is beautiful. We need more art in our community to make us feel as though we're in another country. But again, the city has an ordinance about illegal murals, illegal signs, and we're still waiting for that moratorium to come with its answer. But going back to this point, Zuma Dog, David Salzberg, who's running for mayor for 2013, said, "Why such violations of liens for nuisance abatements when the city doesn't uphold to them?" If the city of Los Angeles would uphold to these abatement orders and comply to them, many of the folks here today wouldn't be here contesting their violations or their citations. There's got to be open dialogue to communicate to these people within our community, whether it's from Mr. Buscano's area, or Mr. Lombange, or Boyle Heights. Because I know people who have been hindered, insulted, and put into a situation where these non-compliance codes have disturbed their lives and the quality of their life. So I say to you, council members in question, what will you do to prohibit these illegal actions from Building and Safety and stay in compliance with L.A. Municipal Code? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that does take care of 1C. That's been moved. Now we are voting on 1E.
Mr. President, before we move forward on 1E, I'd like to have the Building and Safety representative, please come to the table. I understand we've exhausted all measures in working with the property owner here on specifically Item 1E. Can you just tell us what has happened and why do we plan on moving forward with this?
Yes, that's right. My name is Charles Caliballa. I'm a representative from the Department of Building and Safety, and I'm here to talk about that item number, Item 1E. Now, in this case, what happened is that the Department of Building and Safety inspectors, on December 6, 2009, they performed inspections at this property, and they found violations of the Los Angeles Municipal Code. And the property owner was ticketed, as I just talked a moment ago. They found illegal signs at this property, and he was ticketed. He was cited, and invoices were generated. They were sent to him. He failed to pay them, and this was way back in 2009. So it's been two years, two to three years. He hasn't paid for the invoices. He hasn't complied. He was supposed to have complied within a week or two. He claims he complied like after maybe two or three months, but he didn't. The records signed in the department indicate that he failed to comply and failed to pay for the invoices. So the department is charging him $2,527.49, and the department is also recommending that this lien be placed on his property due to his failure to pay. And the breakdown of this amount is $550 is a non-compliance code enforcement fee. There's a charge of a late fee of $1,375. Accumulated interest came to $549.49, and a title report fee of $53 that comes up to And the department is recommending that the lien be confirmed based on his failure to comply with the code.
Very good. Colleagues, I would move that we move forward on Item 1E and for a vote, and I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open roll on 1E. Close the roll. And tally the vote.
15 eyes.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, I believe Mr. Michael Cardion, on Item 1 in general, and not one specific lien. So colleagues, we're voting on each lien, on item per item, but Mr. Cardion.
Okay, weed abatement. We got abatement. We got nuisance. For eight years, we've been living with a nuisance on Soto Street, but nobody here seems to file a complaint and put it in this category. This is what we ask for. Where's Building and Safety at? Are they doing the same thing that parking enforcement is doing? Dancing around with hookers? And yet turning around and telling these people that their property is not up to code? Maybe the councilmen prior to this didn't care about what was going on. Okay? But you seem to be putting all the burden back on the public. Again, the Soto Street slope is an eyesore. Weed abatement is not being done. Oh, wait a minute. That's on the sidewalk. It belongs to the city of Los Angeles. Why don't you put yourself in weed abatement? Mr. Mayor Temp, Pro Temp, Mr. Mayor to Be, wannabe, wannabe. What's he going to do about this? I don't know. He's going to ignore it again. The other mayor wannabe is not even here listening. So I ask you guys, how can you pick and choose what is going to be cleaned and what is not going to be cleaned? I guess it's the councilmen who chooses what properties can go into nuisance. Try to walk across Soto Street. Try to get across in a wheelchair. Is that not a nuisance when you can't get across? Yet, it's not listed here. Try to go across the street and go up in the mud. Try to do it in a wheelchair. If anyone sitting here not paying attention can do it, I'll give you an apple. But I guess nobody can do it, because nobody's even going to try. Why? Because you don't care. You sit here with your high salaries, signing off on people's lives, and don't do nothing about it unless it affects you personally. I think Councilman Buscano should look into this. Because don't believe...
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Item 1K, called special for cards. Sorry, called special for Councilor Parks.
Mr. Parks?
I'd like to continue it for 30 days.
Mr. Parks, I didn't hear you. Did you hear that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Parks would like to continue the item for 30 days to June 15th.
Okay, next.
Item 7, called special by Councilor Garcetti.
You know what? Mr. Buscaino, did the commissioner get here yet? So why don't we... Mr. Garcetti, how quickly is your item? Because then I want to do the responsible banking. Okay, let's start off with Mr. Buscaino's special, which was Item 11. So if we could ask the commissioner to come forward, and Mr. Buscaino, you have the floor.
If I can, Council President, Mr. President, I'll defer to my colleague, Mr. Zein, who heads this committee. Oh, sorry, Mr. Alakon.
Well, I was worried when you were going to defer to Mr. Zein, but I'm a little more comfortable now that I know that you're going to defer to Mr. Alakon. So, Mr. ... Are we going to fight over this? Mr. Zein?
My committee.
Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
I give you back control of your committee.
It's all right. We fight over committees. This is good. Good morning. I remember you in committee and your commitment to the people of Los Angeles. And if you can go into a little background and why you're qualified for this position, and looking at what you've done at your current employer, reduce costs, improve efficiency, which is what Quality and Productivity Commission is all about. You've cut the staff, you've made it more efficient. If you can go into something you've done there and how you're qualified for this position as Quality and Productivity Commissioner for the City of Los Angeles, I need to hear from you.
Sure. Well, good morning, council members. Thank you so much for having me. I'll kind of apologize ahead of time. Though I speak a fair amount, I don't do enough or I don't get nervous. And so I... Well, I tell I'm already getting nervous.
Don't be nervous, because your future depends.
Thank you. I did want to wish Councilmember Rosenthal happy birthday.
67 years old and going strong. You're very welcome.
Happy birthday.
So my name is David Green. My career is information technology. It's involved project management, business continuity, and other things like that. I've worked in finance and healthcare and other industries. And right now, I work for the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. It was something where I came on board and I replaced five different people in their full-time jobs. And what I tried to do was to set the department on a good, solid footing, to make sure that we had good policy, good procedures, and that we built quality in the things that we did. And I guess that's what I see for the commission, is, you know, you know as well as anyone is that we're in a situation where we don't have a lot of resources, both for the city and also too for city commissions. And so I think, you know, building quality into the commission itself will be one of my top priorities, is when you don't have money, you have to make up with willpower and with working smart. And so I want to do all I can to make sure that the commission works well, that it works smart, and that it shows quality, and that what resources we do have are dedicated to those things that being the biggest return to the city that will make the most difference. And always, I'm open to anyone's suggestions. I said hello to Mr. Santana just a moment ago. We work under his auspices, and so whatever I can do to help his department, I'll want to do, and whatever I can do for the city council, I want to do that.
Thank you, David. And you've been at your current employer since 2004, and the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, so you're trying to get people to work and trying to improve their lives and the quality of lives, which is exactly what we need to do with Quality and Productivity Commission. So it falls parallel to what you're doing. Our friend from San Pedro has high accolades for you.
Well, thank you.
You come from San Pedro. You have... Are you familiar with the environment down there?
Very much so, and I started to get to know the city a bit too, as well as the budget and other things like that. And I'm not just a San Pedro boy. I'm also a Los Angeles guy and, of course, a citizen.
How about a valley guy?
I haven't spent as much time in the valley. I grew up in Riverside, and so I know what heat is like, so I tend to stay near the ocean.
Please stay close to the ocean where it's cool. Okay, we had you in committee. You did very, very well there. You've got the qualification, you've got the background, the desire, and with the 15 districts supporting, I don't know how anyone can be opposed to your position on this.
Well, thank you.
And again, all these departments that have fewer resources, fewer dollars, still the public demands that we deliver the best service we can. So it's critical, Quality and Productivity Commission, do that, get those departments to function in a proper fashion. More with less is basically what it's about.
I'll do my best.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I want to thank the mayor for moving forward on this commission appointment, and thank you, Mr. Zein, and your committee for moving forward on this. David Green, I'm proud to call my first commission recommendation a friend of the Harbor area, very involved and active in numerous community-based organizations. And when it comes to this commission, we are entrusting him with improving the responsiveness, efficiency, and quality of services that we deliver to the city. So, and I have all my faith, trust, and confidence that David will perform and will continue to be committed to our great city. So I respectfully ask for an eye vote. Thank you, David, for your service.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you for that shout-out, first of all. How do you see yourself functioning within the worst of times in our city? We truly have less personnel now than we had from the Bradley days, yet we have more people in the city, plus we have more deteriorating streets and so on. You know, we're in a tough moment. How do you see your role interacting with all these issues? And have you looked at the reports that the commission has done? And do you have any thoughts on that as well?
One of the things I saw was the core reports that had to do with accounts receivable sorts of things. And I think with any organization is if you can't... If you don't have cash going in, you don't last very long. And it's definitely true for the city as well. And in terms of the commission itself is that there are three main objectives or efforts by the commission right now. One is an award to recognize innovation, productivity, and efficiency sorts of things. And then also, two, the second one having to do with, there's a little bit of money that's set aside that can be loaned to departments so that they can explore new ways of doing business. And again, it's a loan, so they have to be able to prove that they can pay it back, that there's some benefit that way. Another initiative has to do with an effort to get the different departments of the city and their managers to talk together more type of a thing. And so, you know, you can only do a few things well. And so I think the purpose of the commission or the intent this coming year is to try to combine all three of those things so that we can kind of break down some of the silos, can reward those things where people are doing well, is like Councilmember Alakon said about, you know, the youth. We don't say enough good things about them, well, we don't say good enough things about us and what the city is doing. And, you know, it's got to be scary when there are all kinds of layoffs and furloughs and things like that. And work needs to be more than just trying to preserve your job. It needs to be also trying to better the city and to better your job. And so we're hoping to be able to offer some small carrots, but carrots nonetheless, that will prompt people to think outside the box a little bit more and try to be a little bit more entrepreneurial and certainly have better quality and better efficiency.
Well, first of all, thank you for stepping up. These are tough times for everybody, and we appreciate you getting engaged with us. I have some real issues about the layoffs that are being proposed and its impact on other aspects of it. If you could take a look at that by chance, the 231 potential layoffs, of which 159 are in the police department, and the... layoffs, of which a hundred and fifty-nine are in the police department, and the rest spread out throughout the city, I'd appreciate your insight into that.
Well, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. No more speakers in the, the queues on this item. Let's, uh, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next, we'll go to, congratulations. Mr. Garcetti. We're gonna go to your item, Item seven, and then we're gonna, you'll be followed by Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I want to first of all thank all of the domestic violence shelters and organizations in L.A. for all the work that you do to help so many women in crisis, so many families in crisis, and to find solutions to reduce and prevent domestic violence. Um, colleagues, I'm the point person for the Domestic Violence Task Force on the City Council, a role I inherited from Cindy Misakowski. Um, and as such, I urge your support today on Item seven. Uh, these shelters have helped so many, uh, families and women in their darkest hour of need. The continuing work to prevent and reduce domestic violence is critical, uh, to our city's safety. As we know, officers are called back time and time and time again to the same homes. Until we get people out of those situations, it doesn't make financial sense, but most of all, it rips families apart, and it can leave scars that last not only just for the survivors of domestic violence, but for their loved ones as well. The current demand for services, uh, for survivors of domestic violence far exceeds the current capacity that we have. So we need to use our resources efficiently, find smart ways to fund domestic violence agencies, shelters, and services in Los Angeles. And we need to help provide protection from a life-threatening home environment and help provide supportive services that, uh, assist in integrating back those survivors of domestic violence as well. Um, as we have done a lot of work around here, it certainly is my vision that one day we also have with our DART teams, which are our domestic abuse response teams, the ability to roll out and to be able to stop before we bring an officer back ten, fifteen times, sometimes quite tragically, to, uh, residents, to be able to break that cycle of violence, save these individuals who are the, the victims, and then be able to reintegrate them back into life. So I, uh, thank the, um, Community Development Department, uh, for this RFP, um, working with our block grant funds for the thirty-eighth, uh, year. A lot of people say, there's so much waste in government, there's so much fraud, there's so much abuse. You look right here, the abuses out there that these survivors are experiencing, and it is very important for us to make sure that we spend these anti-poverty dollars, breaking that cycle of violence, and giving some hope back to these women. I urge your support today. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Now, my computer's giving problems. Nothing.
Mr. Zine.
No, nothing. It's still not working.
We have public comment? Mr. Garcetti?
Uh, Mr. President, public comment was satisfied in council and committee.
Oh, so we don't have to take up public comment. Okay, so with that said, prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Alarcon, are you ready with your item? Now, we have, um, public comment on, on your item. Do you want to, maybe we go fifteen minutes? A minute each? Okay, so we'll do public comment on, uh, this item. We'll do a minute to each speaker.
And that's Item thirteen, Mr. President.
Yes. And after, uh, did you want to open up, Mr. Alarcon? Or you want to go straight to public comment?
Councilmembers, as you know, um, we've been working on the responsible banking ordinance for, uh, almost three years now, and, uh, today we have the opportunity to, uh, to approve the ordinance as written by the city attorney. Uh, I do have one minor, uh, change, uh, that, uh, was requested by the CAO, and, and we concur. And, and that is, um, essentially just changing two, two, uh, terms. One is, uh, replacing the word "goals" with "activities" in Section twenty point nine five point one, A, and in Section twenty point nine five point one, C, to replace thirty days with sixty days. Uh, the bottom line is that, uh, generally speaking, we are, we are, uh, providing more scrutiny in the process of selecting banks for services with the city, but at this time, I'd like to defer to public comment.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward at this time Cheryl Eickley, Anna Story, and Ann Williams. I called three names. I'd like to see three people. So that's Cheryl Eickley, Ann Story, and Ann Williams. Ms. Eickley.
Hi, thank you. My name is Cheryl Eickley.
One minute.
I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and I live in the District Four. Thank you. Um, and I speak for myself today. I read the, the proposed, uh, ordinance, and it's taken us three years to get this far. I'm glad we got this far. I do have some concerns about enforcement and auditing. I didn't clearly see that in this ordinance, and I understand that there are some, some enforcement and auditing, um, guidelines somewhere. Also, it doesn't say that we will be divesting any of our money from any banks that act, um, irresponsible, and so that concerns me. And then a couple of the definitions, I don't know if they could be challenged or not, but, um, it says, uh, "Commercial banks use cash deposits to make loans." Is that actually really what they're doing? Um, they're not making that many loans, but I guess we'll find out, uh, sixty days after July first. And then the, um, investment banking definition says "underwriting services," and we know with the foreclosure crisis, the underwriting services have been gutted, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anna Story.
Good morning, Council President Wesson and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Anna Story, and I'm a managing attorney with Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. For more than eighty years, LaFla has served as a frontline law firm for poor and low-wage earners in, um, Angelinos seeking economic justice. We strongly support the Responsible Banking Investment Monitoring Program because we have seen firsthand how banks' operations have driven our current economic crisis, and we have seen what great good banks can do when they meaningfully participate in community investment and responsible lending. Banks must have local accountability, and this program will facilitate that. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Ann Williams.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association, representing four hundred and fifty businesses, employing over three hundred thousand people in the Los Angeles region. CCA wants to thank CAO Santana and his staff for working so hard to bring the banking industry, the advocacy groups, and the city to the table on this issue. While we do not agree with everything in this ordinance, we sincerely appreciate the progress that has been made over the past three years, and we think that what is before you is an imperfect but fair compromise that captures those years of hard work and intense engagement by all the parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Magdalena Sierra, Gary Tobin, Mr. Herman. Magdalena Sierra, well, here, Gary, if you get there first.
Good morning. I'm Gary Tobin with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I too would like to thank Miguel and his team for the hundreds of hours that they put into this, and for averting what might have been a whole lot more money that the city might have spent if the regulations had been much more intensive than they are. We think this is a good compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sierra. Followed by Mr. Herman.
I need somebody's.
We have a translation.
Oh, um.
Begin.
Ah, okay. Uh, vengo a pedirles, por favor.
I'm here to ask you and plead to you.
Que aprueben la ley.
To please approve this ordinance.
De los banqueros responsables.
This responsible banking ordinance.
Por las casas que están en folklore, las casas que ha quitado el banco.
Please do this, um, on behalf of the families whose homes are being foreclosed, for the homes that are currently under, in the bank's possessions.
Solo han hecho que nuestra ciudad se vea fea.
All this has resulted in, is in our city looking ugly.
Uh, y por favor, que tengan más control con los bancos.
And please place a better control, have a better control with the banks.
Y que paren de estar no robando a los contribuyentes.
And help us so they can stop robbing us, the taxpayers.
Uh, porque esto nos afecta a toda la gente.
Because this affects all of us.
Pobre.
All of us.
Principalmente.
Residents of, of low-income status especially.
Eso es lo que yo quiero.
That's what I wanted to share with you.
Por favor, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, followed by Father Scott, Dr. Yolanda Brown. Father Scott, you can just come forward, uh, followed by Dr. Yolanda Brown. Good morning, Father.
Good morning. My name is Father Scott Santarosa. I'm the pastor of Dolores Mission Parish in Boyle Heights, and we participate in L.A. Voice, which represents twenty-five congregations across the city of Los Angeles, thirty-five thousand families. I'm thinking today of Maria Garcia, one of my parishioners who lost her home to foreclosure. She lost also her entire savings. It is your responsibility as our elected officials to spend our money wisely and in the best interest of the vast majority of Angelinos. We strongly urge you to support in favor of the Responsible Banking Ordinance, which is in our best interest, and we believe it is also in the best interest of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Father. Dr. Brown, followed by Ryan Bell.
I'm Yolanda Brown, and in pastoring Blessed Sacrament Church, a member of L.A. Voice, and a former bank executive, we express gratitude to Miguel Santana, CAO office, and the distinguished council members for your history-making vote for an ordinance that establishes L.A. as the nation's leader in encouraging banks' collaboration in rebuilding our community by keeping families in their homes with refinanced mortgages and providing jobs through investments and consulting small businesses and maintaining a land of opportunity for all God's children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Ryan Bell, followed by Father Mott and Father Margarito Martinez. Mr. Bell.
Thank you, distinguished council members, and we want to, uh, I, my name is Ryan Bell. I'm the pastor of the Hollywood Seventh-day Adventist Church and also a member of L.A. Voice, and, uh, we're grateful as well for your, um, progress on the Responsible Banking Ordinance. We're here today, of course, to stand in support, strong support, of this ordinance to create a more fair economy and a, a safer playing field, uh, for all Angelinos. Um, it occurs to me that if we need fresh evidence for the need to keep track of what the banks are doing, whether they're acting responsibly or not, we don't need to look any further than two days ago when we learned that J.P. Morgan had squandered again two billion dollars of our family's money and our nation's money. And so today, we urge you to stand with all Angelinos in support of responsible banking to make sure that our, uh, city is a safe place for our families to live and do business. Thank you.
Thank you. And before, uh, Father Mott, I want to make an announcement that I just received one card to speak on this item, and Mr. Wayne, I'll get to you and you'll be allowed to speak. But once we begin discussions on an item, we, once the discussions begin, the time to submit cards are over. So with that said, Father, welcome to, uh, City Hall.
Thank you. My name is Father James Mott, Catholic priest at Mother Good Council Parish in Las Feliz, Council, uh, Councilman Lamanga's district. This morning at Mass, I asked the, those attending to pray for all of you, that you will vote your conscience and that you'll vote for the common good. You have given a lot of discussion to this. We have worked hard, and I thank you for, uh, bringing, um, your, um, straightforwardness and courage to this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Father Martinez.
Buenos dias. Uh, soy el padre Margarito Martinez. Trabajo en la parroquia de la señora de los, de Talpa.
Good morning. My name is Father Martinez, and I am a priest at the Church de Talpa. Estoy aquí para recordar la importancia del papel de cada uno de ustedes para la comunidad. I am, I am here to remind you of the importance of your role in your positions for the whole community. En determinado momento en elecciones, cada una de las personas hemos confiado en ustedes. At any given moment during the election times, we have trusted in each and every one of you. Hoy es el momento en que ustedes devuelvan la confianza a la comunidad. Today is the right moment for you guys to return that loyalty and trust back to the community. Haciendo que haya una banca responsable, que en realidad ayude. Perdón. Making sure that there's a responsible banking ordinance, which in reality will help. A la comunidad. Todos tenemos derecho a gozar de los bienes de este país. Will help the community. We all have a right to enjoy the benefits. This country has to offer. La comunidad es la que sostiene a los bancos. The community is the one that maintains the banks. El dinero que ellos tienen es dinero de la comunidad. The money the banks have belongs to the community. Por eso ellos tienen una grave responsabilidad con la comunidad. That's the reason why the banks have a very serious and critical responsibility to the community. Debe haber gente honesta en ellos. Debe haber gente que piense en el que vive día a día. Those banks have to have honest people working for them, people who think about the community members on a daily basis. Queremos en esta ciudad una banca responsable. In this city, what we're asking for is a, a responsible banking ordinance. Una banca que esté en la comunidad y que actúe y que vive en la comunidad y que trabaje para la comunidad. We want a bank that acts on behalf and to, for the benefit of the community, that lives in the community, that works in the community, and takes part to help the community. Esto será justicia para todos, para los ricos. That will be justice for all, for the rich people. Y para los pobres. And for poor people.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks. Arminik Norigenian, Beverly Roberts, if you please come forward. I've called three names. I want to see three people. Arnold Sacks, Arminik Norigenian, Beverly Roberts. Uh, Ms. Roberts, you can go first since you're at the, uh, the mic. Good morning.
Thanks. Glad to be here, and thank you for having me. Um, I'm a member of ACE. I've been in my home for twenty-two years. I'm fighting to get a modification. I've been trying for four years to get a modification, and they just won't work with me. So all I'm asking, the, the city has billion, has invested billions of dollars in these banks, and they just will not do the right thing. And also, our blighted homes in our communities, we're fighting to keep, try to get them taken care of. We're having a problem with that. You know what? I'm tired. I'm seventy-five years old, and I just want to see our city come back to its normalcy. Um, and also, just make them responsible and do the right thing, because what goes around comes around.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks. And Mr. Sacks, I'm gonna reconsider eleven. I did not see your card, so you will be afforded the opportunity to chat on that item. Anyway, Mr. Sacks, followed by Arminik Norigenian.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. It's somewhat ironic, I was thinking, making some comments, and then I changed my mind, and I'm thinking, this is almost like A Wonderful Life. We have the Bailey Savings and Loan and the Potter Bank. And who does the council represent? And I gotta think, you don't represent the Bailey Savings and Loan, that's for sure. More like Potter and turning L.A. into Potterville, where people lose their homes. Yes, we have a message to make the City Council, but you're just changing the size of the spoon that you're feeding this load of crap to the public with. You're not doing anything to change the recipe in and of itself. You work hand in hand with the banks, because the banks that you have lawsuits against are the only banks willing to do business with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Norigenian, you'll be followed by Jacob Miller. Jacob Miller.
Uh, good morning. Respectful, uh, City Council members, good morning, fellow Angelinos. Actually, uh, I endorse this Resolution thirteen, uh, because this, uh, this one is, um, progressive legislation and calls for response. for responsible banking investment monitoring program. Actually, since local banks, you know, sometimes, you know, have a very unscrupulous and fraudulent, you know, way to do business with the city of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles should respond back, you know, reinforcing the responsible banking investment monitoring program. But they shouldn't do it only on their own, but should do it in conjunction with federal government, you know, because we won't be able to enforce federal laws on their own. And actually, and banks mostly will likely maybe ignore anything that comes from the city, except the city's use was, use was banks for responsible banking.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller, followed by, we'll go to the Valley, Doug Arseneau and Miriam Fogler. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Jacob Miller. I'm an L.A. city resident. I'm an L.A. city employee for the last 10 years at Department of Animal Services, and also a proud union member with SEIU Local 721. We're here today to urge you, urge the L.A. city council to pass a long-winded responsible banking ordinance. Later today, the city budget and finance committee will be looking at our city budget, a budget that is cut to the bone and beyond. Our city has not yet recovered from the economic crisis that started four years ago, caused by the very banks that are subject to today's ordinance. But this is only a first step to make Wall Street accountable to Main Street. We pledge today to use responsible banking disclosures to keep a constant watch on the banks that do business with our city. Let's put Chase, Wells Fargo, Bank of America, and all the rest of the Wall Street on notice. If they want to do business with the city of Los Angeles, they need to stop the blight of abandoned, foreclosed homes all across our neighborhoods. They need to start investing job creation to put L.A. back to work, and we will be keeping an eye on those blighted homes. We have a big campaign going on, and we expect to, we expect to see some results. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go, we'll go to the Valley. We'll go to the Valley for Doug Arseneau and Miriam Fogler. And the last speaker will be Cook Wayne here in City Hall. Mr. Arseneau in the Valley.
Good morning, council members. My name is Doug Arseneau of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. VICA represents more than 370 businesses in the city of Los Angeles and surrounding communities that have created over 100,000 jobs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak remotely from Van Nuys. This accessibility is critical for the San Fernando Valley residents. While VICA maintains its position that the RBO is counterproductive to the city's goals, we are willing to accept the compromise that arose out of budget and finance that guided the city attorney. The C.A.O. has done an admirable job in drafting a proposal that takes into account both the concerns of citizen groups and the practical needs of our city. We wish to stress the importance of this ordinance being done in a way that does not increase costs for our city and hinders the valuable services provided by certain departments. We look forward to the city working with its financial partners as this ordinance is implemented so the RBO's impacts do not significantly hinder the recovery of our city and its employers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fogler.
I'll tell you, let me tell you something about these banks. They're a bunch of crooks. I lived through the Savings and Loan era of the '70s, okay? And the federal government just lacks all the laws. They were all regulated up to then, and they were paying very good interest on CDs, up to 16% folks. I was making 16%. I was a teenager, okay? They're racketeers. That's all I could tell you. They're all a bunch of crooks. They're all just out to make big money. And, but the thing is, this is a federal issue. You should be bringing it up to your representatives in Congress and the U.S. Senate and that Obama. Okay? The same thing with the stock market. How can you let Chase Bank get away with spending, losing $2 billion of the customers' assets? I think that's a big ripoff to the customer. They don't care about the customer. Matter of fact, they give you a service charge, they don't give you three or four chances before you overdraft. They just charge you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Do we have Cook Wayne here at City Hall? Please come forward. Mr. Wayne.
Good morning. I'm Cook Wayne. I'm representing good jobs, L.A. What, what we're really all here for is because we want some better mornings. The banks right now need to be held accountable. This item is about disclosure. Passing this ordinance, this long overdue ordinance, holds the banks accountable. It makes them accountable of showing what kind of contributions they contribute to our community. Are they helping the banks by giving loans? Are they helping the families by stopping them from being foreclosed on? This is what we're trying to get accomplished today, and we're urging the L.A. city council to go ahead and help us so we can stop these babies from being taken out of their homes, and we can help our community build a better future. Let's get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Mr. Alacón. And we have, we have members in the queue, but I thought you might want to give an opening statement.
Council members, it's been a long time since we introduced this measure in 2009, but I'm proud to say that today's council meeting, I know that you will do the right thing and protect the taxpayers of Los Angeles. I wanted to share with you that in other jurisdictions, they've already passed a similar ordinance, and it was based on the ordinance we wrote, as well as an ordinance in Cleveland and Philadelphia. Cleveland's been longstanding for 20 years and Philadelphia for about 12. And we looked at the Philadelphia ordinance and modeled ours after theirs. So to date, Seattle, Berkeley, Boston, Pittsburgh, Portland, and Kansas City, in addition to Philadelphia and Cleveland, have all passed banking responsibility ordinances. And today, as we speak, the city council of New York is considering this same ordinance. So this is, this is a cry from the people. It is a cry that says, they don't want us to be bank regulators. We're not regulators. We're good customers. And as customers, we have the responsibility to protect the taxpayers' money, to ensure that we are, when spending that money, we are spending it in the most wise fashion and a fashion that gets the greatest return from our expenditure. That's what this is about. For those who say this is regulation, it's not regulation. If they don't want to sell to us, then don't give us the information. But if they want to make money off the people of Los Angeles, then they should tell us how they're reinvesting in our communities. What are they doing about the foreclosure crisis? Are they providing principal reduction loans? Are they providing small business lending? Are they providing credit to small businesses? They wiped out all the lines of credit for small businesses, pretty much for all of Los Angeles. And these are the kinds of activities that we can affect by virtue of shining a bright light on the information that is requested in this RBO. That's what this is about. It's caveat emptor. Let the buyer beware. Well, with this ordinance, we will be more aware of who we are buying services from, and that's all it's about. I hope that as a result of this, we get greater investment in Los Angeles. Cleveland, over the last 20 years, says, based on studies of similar cities of similar size, that they have gained $9 billion of additional investment from banking institutions who participate in the RBO over there. That's the potential for Los Angeles. It's not so much about getting the information. It's about making sure that we use that information to leverage financial institutions to invest more in Los Angeles, create more jobs, create more businesses, create more opportunity for the people of Los Angeles. I think our $300 million in deposits every day speaks loudly. We should get more for it. The $30 billion portfolio that we have in our pension system should get more back. The banking institutions know that we are a prime customer, and we ought to use that positioning to leverage more services for our community. That's what this is all about. I know that you've been through the wringer on this ordinance, and I want to thank you for your diligence in understanding this ordinance, and I have every faith that you will pass this ordinance today. And so with that, again, I want to say thank you to the Budget and Finance Committee for expediting this through in the last several months, and to President Wesson for his help in marshaling this through. Thank you so much for helping the community take control of their dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Alacón. Now, next on the queue is the birthday boy, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you. Miguel, could you come up real quickly so we all understand exactly what this compromise is that we worked out? I want to thank the Occupy L.A. folks for making some very serious, compelling discussions about foreclosures and other issues where the banks have not shown leadership. I just got to thank the whole notion that the banks have been historically good and bad. The bad part, we know most recently of how it's all gone down. What did we accomplish in this compromise? Could you give us the salient points of it?
Good morning, Miguel Santana, C.A.O. What you have before you is an attempt to try to balance two very important values. The first one is the value of ensuring that we are fiscally responsible, that recognizing that the city relies on financial institutions when we borrow money to keep our own dollars, and that ultimately, we should make decisions that protect our ability to utilize effectively those dollars and also protect taxpayers. The other side of, the other value we're trying to protect is the value of partnering with organizations that take care of their clients and who ensure that they treat their clients in a respectful manner, they provide access to capital, access to loans in a fair way. And so what this ordinance does, it essentially allows you, and as a consumer, to know exactly the kind of activities that they're engaged in out in your districts. Based on census tracts, each bank who seeks to do business with the city will have to demonstrate how many loans they provide, how many, those to small businesses, how many home loans, and a variety of different criteria that we're asking. And that information will be public. It will be updated on an annual basis, and so it will be available to you as decision-makers, and it'll also be available to the public. And they will in turn respond to that information, and from that, it is the hope that better practices will result.
Any impact on foreclosures or potential impact on foreclosures in our city?
Well, obviously, if you're reporting on a number of foreclosures and the kind of foreclosure policies that you have, and whether or not you participate in the foreclosure programs that the city manages, and you have to report that, it is our hope that through that disclosure, it would encourage a reduction of foreclosures, as well as greater participation in city foreclosure prevention programs.
Okay. Can we have a report back on that over the years so we know exactly where we are in the foreclosures, what they've put online, what they've given us, and how we can impact it more effectively going forward? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I too join my colleagues in support of this item. Actions speak louder than words, and in this arena, the loudest action we can take is with our dollars. And I want to thank the coalition that's come together to make this possible, the work of everybody that is here. I'm especially proud of those from my district, which is extremely well-represented, folks from L.A. Voice and other organizations that have been at the cutting edge of making sure that we do this. And I want to thank Mr. Alacón for his good work as well in pushing this forward and in building consensus to do the right thing here. It's simple, the Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles should not be doing business or depositing taxpayers' dollars with institutions that are bad actors. Straight and simple. I think every taxpayer, regardless of their political stripe, would feel that way. It is just a matter of common sense and of decency. When we, these chambers stood against apartheid, when they've stood against businesses that were doing business in Burma, when that country was oppressing itself, it's right here in our backyard. And the converse is that the city should be rewarding institutions that do help our communities with our business and with our deposits. Those who help start businesses, give capital to the people that need it for startup, help people stay in their homes, and who invest in our neighborhoods, but who also work with the organizations that on the ground are having the conversations with those at risk of losing their homes. There's a lot of knowledge there for the banks. And when I've talked to good banks who are acting the right way, they're actually taking that knowledge, that free labor essentially that people are doing, going door to door, because sometimes, we can't save people. But when we can, we know who those people are, and it's a little more nuanced than just pulling out an Excel spreadsheet, looking at the numbers and saying, we think these ones will go and these ones won't. That human knowledge, which a lot of churches and a lot of institutions are doing and having that, those conversations, are critical for our banks to use, and our goal is to weed the bad apples out of L.A. and promote those banks that are doing the right thing. Three years ago, I began working on addressing the impacts of foreclosures here in our city by making it illegal for banks to kick renters out of foreclosed properties, even though they're making their monthly payments on time. These were the truly innocent victims of the foreclosure crisis, and folks who are taking control sometimes of the notes of apartments and homes that were being rented were simply kicking people out. They're saying, you can take, you know, we'll take your keys today and give you $1,000 or we'll give you nothing tomorrow. And that was just illegal, where we didn't have the protection for buildings past 1978 and for homes that were being rented. We made sure that we did that. And most recently, we introduced a motion to eliminate the ability for owners of foreclosed properties to opt out of the foreclosure registry. We need that information, like Mr. Rosendahl was saying. We need to make sure that information is being acted upon, and that is the way that we're going to show that Los Angeles truly is leading the way out of the foreclosure crisis instead of compounding it. Thank you, and I urge your support today for this ordinance.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Richard, for your hard work, your tenacity again showing itself. But Santana, as we look through the ordinance itself, and there's this matrix of information, where would predatory loans fall? Does that get in any way disclosed, given any kind of relationship these institutions might have with either subcontractors or other ancillary organizations that they are connected with that are involved in predatory loans? Will we have any insight to that impact?
Well, again, the point behind the ordinance is to require banks to provide us all that information. That information will be organized in a way that's accessible to both you and the public, and will have a sense based on census tracts, exactly the kinds of loans that are given in the various areas.
But my specific question is, because I did not see the word predatory loans in the language in the ordinance, is that included as part of that body of information?
Trying to remember specifically. No, it doesn't specifically cite that.
Is, could we add that as a friendly amendment without disjourning the, or holding up this ordinance?
What I recommend as related to that piece is that we're working with both the banking industry as well as the advocates on how all of this is implemented, and we could include that as part of our discussion with both sides about how do we identify those particular loans that you're referring to, and then from that, determine how we'll be organizing the matrix.
So how can I be assured it will be in form of report? I would like to see an aligned item on predatory loans. This city has gone through several hearings on this issue, and I don't want to let that go. I think it's an important variable that speaks to character and this notion of predictability and who we're dealing with. So how can I make that commitment?
No, I think, I think through certainly by your discussion, we'll present it as part of the discussion with the banking institutions and with the advocates, and try to incorporate that in that context so that there will be a specific line item that unpacks exactly what those kinds of loans are and how that could be reported out.
So could you have a report back on how that structure will be?
Yes. Well, all of it's going to be reported back to you.
But I want to make sure predatory loans are in it.
That's correct. We'll do that.
And just in closing, many folks who are right now in the process of fighting for their homes, dealing with scrupulous characters, authority figures that take advantage of others, either because of the lack of knowledge or inability to speak the language, there are some organizations out there that provide counseling, and they're approved by HUD. And I just want to put this out there, this is the website for homeowners that can register for free clinics. On the website, www.lanhs.org, or they can call 213-381-2862. Persons can also contact 1-888-995-HOPE, that's 4673, or they can contact www.makinghomeaffordable.gov. So I want to put that out there because folks are having expectations about this ordinance, but some folks are hurting now, and they need assistance now, and hopefully they can reach one of these organizations to support them in their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Richard, I want to acknowledge you for your tenacity, because this has been a very controversial issue for a long time. I remember the lobbying was taking place, so you got scars all over your body from it, but you won the war. Miguel, the banks are controlled basically by the federal government. Have we found that any of the banks that we deal with are not cooperating, or have they shown cooperation when you're dealings to this point? they shown cooperation when you're dealings to this point?
Well, as, as some of the testimony, I think the banking community is not exactly thrilled that we're doing this, but I think we worked on a compromise that both the banking institutions and the advocates can support. The way the ordinance works is that if you choose not to provide this information, and that's certainly your choice, no one's required to do business with the City of Los Angeles, if you fail to submit that information, you just simply won't qualify as, as a partner with us. So it's a pact.
So in other words, we won't be putting deposits, or we won't be dealing with those particular institutions?
That's correct. We won't be engaged in any kind of activity if the financial institution simply says, "This is, information is too onerous, I don't want to make it available." And so then, if they fail to provide it, then they will be deemed unqualified to do business with the City of Los Angeles.
Do we require other information that the federal government does not require? Is there a duplication of any sort that they say, "Well, we'll give it to the federal government, we're not going to give it to you"? If they opt out and say, I mean, what are we requiring that the feds don't already require? And if they wish to opt out, do they still provide that information to the federal government?
For the most part, they provide most of this information already to the federal government. It's, the way we're asking for it, though, is much more specific and much more accessible to the public, and so.
They want to keep it hidden, but this will expose it.
Right. This will expose it, and it allows everyone in the community, allows all of you to understand it more clearly. Now, if you want to find it, you have to be somewhat of an expert to sort of go through all the volumes of, of reports to really capture this information. This actually allows it to be organized in one way that better informs you as a consumer.
So it'll be easy access for the city, for our investments, easy access for the consumer, for their opportunities to purchase or to do business with that particular institution?
That, that is correct, and it'll be available on the city's website as well.
So that we will publish that information for the public. And I know that this issue with the banks is not for a particular community, this is throughout the city, throughout the region, probably throughout the country, where we see, I know in my district, there's many folks who've lost their jobs, income has been reduced, they've been kicked out, foreclosed, the homes then going to disrepair. So this is something that affects all areas of the City of Los Angeles, and hopefully other communities will then adopt a similar regulation, just to make it responsible for everyone. So I want to thank you for what you've done on it to make it work, because I know it was a time-consuming, a very, very difficult task to get them to come together, and to get Mr. Alacon for being tenacious to make this happen. Long overdue, so strongly support this measure to help all the folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.[767.49][767.49](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Zine, tenacity is a good word to describe Mr. Alacon's efforts on this. I want to thank you as well, Mr. Alacon, but I think this is a good way to make public policy for the city. After the initial discussion about having a banking ordinance, a working group was put together that had all stakeholders there to come up with something that makes sense. Banking representatives were there, advocacy groups were there, and I think this is what we have, is a good way to go about in getting more public information out there so that we are all aware about actions or things that need to get done to improve how we are working with our banks in this city. We have a large contingency today of people from my district, from Baja Heights, from Dolores Mission, and Talpa, and LA Voice. I want to thank you for your continued advocacy, and not only on this issue, but we've got to remember that through this recession, through this economic pain, there are a lot of people hurting out there, and there are groups out there that raise these issues that we as a city have a responsibility to respond to, whether it's within our jurisdiction or not. We've got to do everything possible to raise these issues and do what is within our jurisdiction that, that we allow more people of all income levels in this city to have the resources they need for a better life in this great city. So thank you to the representatives and the advocacy groups and the coalition, you've done a tremendous job, and thank you for working in this working group that I think we came up with, a good compromise that makes sense for all. Thank you so much.[864.69][864.69](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Alacon, to close.
Yes, Councilmembers, thank you very much for your positive comments, and I want to thank the supporters who've been there for the almost three years that we've been working on this. Especially, I want to thank One LA for organizing to support this measure and helping us hone in on exactly what we wanted to accomplish. LA Voice and PICO have been there from the beginning, Good Jobs LA, SEIU 721, but more than that, SEIU...[903.73][903.73](APPLAUSE). I just, just want to say that SEIU has a national organizing effort on, on this type of ordinance, and, and I want to applaud their national leadership for that. Los Angeles Legal Aid Foundation, ACE, of course, has been there from day one.[930.32][930.32](APPLAUSE). And I want to thank the California Reinvestment Coalition and Community, the National Community Reinvestment Coalition, which is an organization that's dedicated to getting banks to provide more information for the Community Reinvestment Act, but now at the municipal level as well. And so I also, you know, my staff was getting very frustrated that this action wasn't moving very, moving forward very fast. And at one point, I, I pulled my staff aside and I said, "You know, you really need to have patience here, because if this is going to mean something, it really has to be, be desired by the people of Los Angeles." And it wasn't until Occupy LA happened that, that the people of, of Los Angeles took notice, and the council then was stimulated into action. And so I want to thank the organizers of Occupy LA, but most importantly, the general, the, all the organizations that made this happen. I want to thank also publicly Chairwoman, former Chairwoman of the FDIC, Sheila Baer, who encouraged me early on to continue to press this, because she said, "We absolutely need municipalities to take on this responsibility." This is happening across the country. The National League of Cities, as a result of this ordinance, has created a clearinghouse of information about banking responsibility-type ordinances. The City of San Diego is going to take up, the president is, is going to offer a, a fair banking ordinance, which is going to be very similar to what we are doing today. So this is, this is a movement that is, I believe, will continue to grow. But the importance of it is not the ordinance per se. The importance of it is to do what Cleveland did, to get the reinvestment in our community. So all of the committee, community that come together, all these organizations, I, I plead with you to remain vigilant on this issue, to, to stay in tune with the information and then act on that information. If you believe that, that we shouldn't deposit in, in an organization that loses $2 billion in risky hedge funds, then you need to scream about that. And I, I think that that is, that is where we will be able to say whether or not this ordinance is a success. But today, I, if the council votes for this, it will be a tremendous victory, not for a city councilman, not for the city council as a whole, or the mayor. It'll be a victory for the people of Los Angeles. So I want to thank all of you.[1092.15][1092.15](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander, was your button pushed inadvertently?
No. All right, just calling for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon, for all of your hard work. And Miguel, to everyone who's worked on this issue.[1118.15][1118.15](APPLAUSE). Richard, two questions. If we vote on this today, will we beat New York, or did New York beat us?
As I understand, they're still discussing it.
Next question. Which two members on this council were born in Cleveland, Ohio?
I, I only know of one, sir.
And who might that be?
Might be the president of the city council.
And Ms. Baer. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. The city attorney has submitted an ordinance, amended ordinance as relative to the motion that Mr. Alacon made with the changes.
All right. Let's again, prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.[1178.15][1178.15](APPLAUSE).
Take the applause.[1180.15][1180.15](APPLAUSE).
Fourth with which?
Fourth with Mr. Cardenas.
Point of clarification, did you ask where they were born or when they were born?
I definitely was asked when.
Okay.
Where. Okay. At the request of Mr. Englander, Madam Clerk, we're going to now take item 10. Chief, sorry to keep you waiting.
Sorry, thank you very much. We have a couple chiefs here, actually, if.
To all of the chiefs, sorry to keep you waiting.
If we could bring the chiefs up. While they're coming up, Mr. President, if we could take, take item eight quickly, it was already satisfied public comment, so we don't need to open public comment, we could just go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We're going to switch to item eight. There are no speakers in the queue for this item, let's, we already did have public comment during the committee.
We already satisfied public comment and committee.
So let us open the roll on item eight. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now we're at item 10. You still have the floor, Mr. Englander.
Great, thank you very much. Members, what's before us right now is the consolidation of OPS, the Office of Public Safety with Los Angeles Police Department. There's been a lot of questions on this, and there have been just as many answers. And I want to thank LAPD as well as OPS, Eileen Decker in the mayor's office and our CAO, who have been working tirelessly to answer all of these questions that have been brought up in both committees, in all the hearings, in all the, all the, all the conversations and dialogue that has occurred. One of the concerns was some of the stakeholders early on weren't meeting, and so I wanted to get an update on that. That was an instruction to LAPD to work with the stakeholders, including the labor groups, to make sure and ensure those things are happening and concerns are being addressed. I will say that from what I've heard, and they'll let them answer that, is that I'm, I'm not only satisfied, I'm ecstatic about the fact that they've actually reached out to many of these folks and have worked hard to make sure that they're getting those answers. We voted in concept, concept to support the implementation of this plan. I strongly stand behind it. I think as a chair of public safety, it, this is something that just makes sense. It makes sense, and there's been questions, folks, that, the questions have been, really, do we trust LAPD to guard our valued assets and people at parks and libraries and city facilities and water, wastewater treatment facilities? And I couldn't tell you, I couldn't think of anybody else who we would trust more and who's better qualified and trained and will bring OPS into the fold as part of their family. And so with that, I'd like to open it up to Chief Moore for opening comments and to address some of those concerns and issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good afternoon, Assistant Chief Michael Moore. I'm joined by my partner, Assistant Chief Sandy Joe MacArthur from LAPD. And as to your question, Councilman Englander, the department for the last two weeks, following the instructions by the Budget and Finance, began a series of meetings with the involved stakeholders to include the city departments. Specifically, we've met with the library, both the GM and AGM as well as Wrexham Park, the zoo. We are scheduled this week to meet with Bureau of Sanitation on Thursday, and then next Monday, we'll sit down with representatives, the general manager of the Convention Center. There's been some calendaring with them, with their schedule that's, that's interrupted that. However, as to the involved labor and bargaining units, we've met with each bargaining unit on at least one occasion, many of them multiple times, and we have meetings ongoing this week, informal discussions regarding how the department envisions this consolidation and the true use of and optimizing the, the current job and impositions that OPS fills, a critical need that fills here in the city on its city facilities.
Great, thank you very much. And if, Chief, Sandy Joe, if you want to add anything to that?
I, I, we're open for questions.
Questions? Okay. And Ms. Decker?
Thank you, Mr. Englander, but I'll reserve for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So I, I ask for your eye vote on this, members.
Thank you, Councilmember. We do have several speakers on the queue. Councilman Zine, followed by Councilman Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Los Angeles Police Department had the transit operations for a period of time, five years, and it didn't turn out as we thought, we lost that contract. How can we assure those skeptical, because I've received some emails from the different departments, that we are going to maintain that security at the library and these other facilities that are concerned that we're not going to be there? LAPD enforcement versus security? How do we guarantee those folks? And I'd like to also hear from the representatives here, from the union, from the Office of Public Safety, that we're not going to have a situation where they're going to say, "We told you so."
Okay, well, Councilman, Chief Parks assured this, this very body of that, that the service levels that are being delivered today will be maintained, if not improved upon. The, the aspect of security and policing of city critical infrastructure is certainly well-understood by the department, by LAPD. We look forward to the opportunity of integrating the men and women that are within Office of Public Safety, the jobs that they're doing today in integrating them into our existing operations. Our assurances to the city departments are ongoing. We're meeting with a number of those. As to those who may be questioning or posing questions to you, we would encourage an opportunity for the department, for myself and, and members of my leadership team to meet with them. We're, we are meeting, and the individuals we're meeting with at the general manager levels and AGMs are, are open and supportive of this consolidation.
Have you heard those concerns?
We are hearing the concerns that the, Chris, the city's current fiscal crisis, that it jeopardizes their current staffing, that they've seen an erosion of their staffing over the last two and three years, and they're very concerned that this is a further effort to do that erosion, and our assurance to them is quite different. We are assuring them that the department is fully committed to this consolidation, that it will ensure the staffing occurs, and that it will look to this body in support of the staffing needs for those critical sites.
Because when a crime occurs, it doesn't go on Office of Public Safety stats, it goes on LAPD stats.
It does, and the integration of security and policing into one consolidated body, we believe is not only an efficient management tool, but we think that public safety will improve across the city, at those facilities, as well as with our city employees and those who visit our facilities.
And if I could just have the folks here from the bargaining unit, gentlemen, from the bargaining unit, Office of Public Safety, gentlemen, do I have you come forward and just, the concerns that are being addressed with the, the discussion that's taking place? Well, I don't care, either one of you, whoever the president or the spokesperson, I just want to make sure that what we've asked for in the Public Safety Committee is being followed through, that your issues are being resolved, discussions are taking place, so we can do a transition, if we're going to do that in a smooth fashion and not have this uncertainty.
Councilman Zine?
Go ahead.
Michael Robinson, President of the Los Angeles General Services Police Office Association. Well, I think our major concern is that we're for the concept of, I, I think it'd probably be a good thing for the city, the concept of bringing these departments together, but I don't want it to move so fast that we miss some points in the officers' questions about, right now, there's nothing. They don't know if their time's going to be brought across, they don't know about the pension, they don't know about the, just simple as the uniform, they don't know anything.
So there's unresolved issues.
Right.
But the discussion's taking place.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. Please press it again.
But there's, I just want to fill it up.
If I, if I could, for point of clarification, in what the committee did as the chairman of the committee, I just want to reiterate, it wasn't necessarily to, there's, there's some legal issues and other things that are outside the purview of the merging of the pensions, things like that, that aren't part of either LAPD or OPS, that occurs separately. And what we asked for was, and what we heard, and the concern was, there wasn't even a dialogue. And we've asked and instructed that they sit down and have a dialogue to work out the things that they did control and that they did have a purview under, and that, in my understanding, is that you have been, then you've had meetings now that have occurred. And so I wanted to thank both of you again for doing that and fulfilling the obligation of what the committee voted on.
Mr. Englander, thank you. Thank, on my time, I just wanted to make sure that that's taking place.
Councilman Zine, we have two other speakers on the queue, so.
I just want to finalize that that's taking place. That's my only concern.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cardenas, then the Councilman Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. I'd like Chief Newton to come forward and sit at the table, and also the head of GSD, Tony Royster, if you would please. And I should be so bold to apologize to both of you that in order for us to go forward, I think it's important for us to take. Thank you very much. I'd like Chief Newton to come forward and sit at the table, and also the head of GSD, Tony Royster, if you would, please. And I should be so bold to apologize to both of you, that in order for us to go forward, I think it's important for us to take note and understand where we've been and where we're at. And I think that everybody at the table agrees with that. And I understand how busy and how large the LA Police Department is, and I think it's important for us to understand that this is a merger that's not easy. It's complicated. There's a lot of legal matters that need to be clarified, and, not obstacles, but legal matters that need to be approved. But at the same time, I think it's important for us to understand that just because we're finally going to cook this goose, the way they've been trying to cook it for the last five years in the budget process, it looks like we're finally going to do that. However, we got to make sure that we do it in a way that takes into account what was the original responsibility, and as of late, the responsibility of OPS officers, and then make sure that going forward, we keep the primary responsibilities in front of us. And if we change those responsibilities, I think we should do it eyes wide open, and let everybody affected know that we're changing the responsibilities, as to what deployment is going to be like, which facilities are going to get a certain kind of attention compared to what attention they got before, et cetera. Those are the kinds of details that I think that everybody here at the table needs to be here and understand where we're going and what we're going to do, and how everyone is going to be affected. In addition to that, I think it's important for us to make sure that, the question of the CIO, who's going to be leading most of the discussion when it comes to the details of the broader parameters of this move?
Well, there's two pieces to it. The operational elements of how this is going to be structured, how it's going to be organized, who will be reporting to whom, all of those questions. The chief and his staff will be leading that discussion.
So LAPD, and then the other half?
There's the other half related to the impact bargaining, the specific questions on the particular impacts that this action will have on the employees that my office will lead.
Okay. And in addition to that, the only reason why I didn't ask the representatives of the bargaining unit to come forward as well, because I don't want people to get the impression that we're negotiating here at this table, okay? But they also need to be able to submit their concerns, et cetera, and those concerns need to be appropriately respected in the manner in which we do so, in any case, when we're dealing with bargaining units. So I think it's important for us to understand, members, that this is something that looks like we're going to move in that direction. The Budget Committee has already said that we're going to move in that direction budgetarily, and this is the policy side of it, this motion that's before us today. So let's make sure that we hold all of our staffs and ourselves accountable to make sure that we make these final decisions and the final transitions, that it's done in a manner where everybody's respected, and that hopefully, everything will be done as well as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Englander?
Just on a point of clarification, one of the things you had asked for is also that the facilities, Mr. Cardenas, were also being managed, and the changes, and that wasn't answered. So that's all being done with the MOUs as well, and they're working all those details out to ensure that safety is not compromised at all.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale.
Obviously, Mr. Englander is right. Safety's the number-one concern of all of us. What's your sense of a timetable on this, Miguel?
It's in the proposed budget, so on July 1st, it would be effectuated. What we need to do in very short order is seek out legislation. The mayor's office and the CLA have been identifying potential authors for legislation to make a technical amendment to the current Pino Code that specifies GSD, and change that to LAPD's, to ensure that those officers maintain their peace officer status. I think we're very optimistic that that will actually take place. And then it'll take, you know, I think what's been reported by the police department, that it'll take about six months to fully implement. I could have them sort of speak to that process.
Well, yeah, the, Councilman, we anticipate a year, closer to a year, to a year and a half, given the full integration. And again, full integration, the department's, one of the aspects of this is the integration of the capital equipment, the technology, the cameras and radios and so forth. So it's a series of steps that would take place. This is another step today that we see over the next 18 months for completion.
Okay, that's very important, and I appreciate the slowness with what you're doing for two reasons. One, the different facilities right now, like the libraries and the other groups that are part of it, that the integration with the local people, with the senior lead officers who are familiar with these people, continues. And obviously, second is all of their issues that they might have, that they now have, a separate group won't have with the LAPD. Question for LAPD, how many, there are 37 sworn there, or 50 sworn, how many have the full credential of an LAPD officer?
Well, there's 97 sworn members within the Office of Public Safety.
Yeah.
And the 37 number that's been thrown out there, there's 37 officers, sworn officers, that have gone through the LAPD academy.
Right.
So that was the first, we looked at 37. We've certainly more, as we've talked with the unions. As many as would like to come immediately, we would like to accommodate. But we do know that there's at least 37 that have already gone through LAPD training that would, that was our ballpark, the best ballpark.
Right, so the door is open for others over a period of time, if they need to take further requirements and so on and so forth.
Yes, absolutely, and we've talked in concept with some of the union representatives. In case there was any concerns about meeting requirements or not, we believe they will meet the requirements, and if there's any concern at all, it should be minor, and that we will be able to rectify that with our training and support. And so, again, when you look at the timetable from 12 to 18 months, our goal would be to have the majority of personnel done within this, as soon as possible, within that 12-month period.
Fair enough. Now, the captain is the big shot in the command, as Charlie Becca says. The captain is the key. Will that then integrate him into that particular captain's position so that the library doesn't feel their short change if there's an emergency somewhere? How will that work out so that we have that comfort level?
The department recognizes this very early on, and has appointed a, designated a captain, as well as two lieutenants. And those individuals exist today to begin forming those relationships and strengthening the bond, so that, and to be mindful of the work that OPS has done in providing services and with all the stakeholder departments, and our commitment is to continue those stability in those leadership positions as this consolidation occurs over the course of time.
Great, thank you all very much for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Mr. Englander, I have two more speakers in the queue, but it's my understanding, per your staff, that public comment has been satisfied on this item. Okay, so with that said, Mr. Busta Ino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Newton, I just want to hear from you. I know we've been talking about this consolidation without hearing from General Services and the leadership from General Services, so your thoughts?
Back in 2006, or when we had the original OPS consolidation, that took about two and a half years. And I'm pleased to hear that we're looking at slowing down the process some, and looking at a 12- to 18-month timetable. I don't think we're opposed to the consolidation in concept. I just want to make sure that all of my employees and the General Services employees are treated fairly in the end, and all of the issues that they've brought forward to me have been satisfied before the actual implementation. That's the way we did it the first time. We had all of the issues resolved, and then it was implemented. And that's what I ideally would like to see this time.
I appreciate it. I was reminded by my colleague, Mr. Englander, that we heard from OPS, but not from you directly. We missed you at the committee meeting. You know, colleagues, this makes total sense. Some of the frustrations I had as a senior lead officer, and I had a great relationship with senior lead officer Al Martinez at the Harbor, sometimes we, you know, we had issues at the park, on the 390 man at the park, or 5150 at the library, where we had issues with response times, and, because you're stretched thin as well. What this is going to do is really hold everyone, LAPD, OPS, accountable, be more effective as a law enforcement agency, you know, even the point, we're going to bring OPS to the CompStat process. And I've been to CompStat, and sometimes, you know, you get hammered with questions, but that's what it's all about, in making sure that we remain one of the safest cities in America, and I think this makes complete sense. But I do want to point out, and share the sentiments and the concerns of my colleagues, that this, a yes vote will instruct the LAPD, in conjunction with each client department and impacted employee unions, to develop an MOU that includes, among other issues, a maintenance and at least a current public safety and security services levels provided by OPS. So I will continue to support this consolidation, and look forward to having OPS as part of the LAPD family.
Mr. Cardenas?
I have just one more request, and this is to LAPD and the CIO mainly, and that is that if we can get a report back in the next 30 days, once this is approved at the council level, in the next 30 days, not of final deadlines or timelines, but a better general timeline as to what we think the breakpoints of things that we can achieve by when on this process. Because in general, what we have here is we're approving that sometime in the next fiscal year, we will have completed this altogether. If everything goes well, it's technically speaking, most of it could be done in the first 60 days of the next fiscal year, who knows? But what I'd like to see is, if we can, once we approve this, then everybody can go to their respective places of work, and then try to figure out what needs to come first, second, third, what are the legalities that need to be overcome, et cetera, what we're going to have to wait for the city attorney's office to get back to us on, the retirement systems, et cetera, the opt-ins and opt-outs, all those things. So we can have a breakdown matrix of, hopefully, what kind of timelines we could hopefully achieve each one of these breakpoint responsibilities in this transition. Okay?
Yes.
We could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. I think Mr. Cardenas covered a lot of the questions that I had about the timeline of implementation of this, and even though we're moving this forward for this calendar year in a hurry, or this fiscal year, excuse me, that we need to state changes still for this to be in place. Is there a mechanism, Mr. CIO, by which we could approve this in concept and move forward so that 37 spaces, the 37 positions, people could begin to see what sort of interest level there is, folks fill them, those that can transfer over, but at the same time, take, you know, another two weeks or so? There's been a feeling, I think, not just some at the management level, some at the officer level, of whether there's been enough negotiation, enough discussion on the implementation side, so that we move forward in concept, but which you have, so that we don't get behind in terms of implementation. We push on the state law stuff at the same time. Those 37 folks can be surveyed and see how many are going to go over, but then we get a final look at it in a couple weeks?
The question is what you do with the first LAPD class. In order to generate savings of over $2 million, it is proposed, both in the budget and on this item, that the first class in the LAPD be eliminated, so that those positions could be filled instead by folks internally. So if you were to, if the budget assumes the elimination of that class, so that would be the one sticking point, how do you handle that? Should the department assume that they're going to hire from the outside and thus eliminate those savings, or should they assume that that class should be canceled and simply replaced by the 37 individuals who may qualify?
And I get that, but there's been pretty good intel in terms of people, there's a sense that there are of those individuals. I mean, I've had people on Facebook and emails who are actual individual officers saying, "I think this is a good idea, I wanted to move forward, I have some questions about this, that, or the other." But, I mean, I think all of us collectively have a pretty good sense of that is. So I know it's an act of faith, but it's a pretty strong act of faith based on pretty good research, correct? I mean, you don't want us to say, "Don't go forward with canceling the class," and I'm not proposing that happen.
Right.
So we could do that, book that in there, but still, you know, in a couple weeks, come back and see, are there any of these remaining logistical issues on pension portability, and some of the other things that have been raised, you know, by folks who have questions, to come back and give us a final rundown of that, and ask for you to sit down with those.
Yeah, I think the challenge is, is that this is, there's, as I think the department, the department could speak to it more specifically than I can, is that it's going to take, I thought it's six months, they said it was going to take a year, maybe longer, to fully ironing out all the issues. And so, and so that becomes the, sort of, the operational issues. On the impact bargaining piece, that my office is heading up, I think we could do that relatively quickly and.
That's the piece I'm most interested in. I mean, obviously, nobody's trying to slow that stuff down, and I wouldn't say, "Oh, if you haven't settled all that stuff with the LAPD side," you know, which we know is going to take a long time, forget it, none of this moves forward. I think it's just, it's just a hand-in-hand step that's respectful to our employees across all departments.
We could certainly come back and report at, normally, we would do it at ERC, but maybe have a closed session or report back to you directly on the status of the impact bargaining within the next two weeks.
Okay, then I'd move that we do that. We move forward with those 37, move those 37 forward, get that, and see what we can work out in those two weeks. Thank you.
And Miguel, why don't you report back to him individually?
Got it.
Mr. Englander?
Well, include me in that discussion, as well as the Chair of Public Safety. But thank you very much. The, we'll host at Mr. Garcetti's office, though, I think he has bitter coffee. Folks, this is, this is not, as one council member referred to, is cooking the goose. This is a marriage, it's not a divorce. This is a time for celebration, and the ones that I really do want to honor, quite frankly, that have been putting up with the most, that have been the most patient, that have worked the hardest, I wish I could say it was LAPD, I wish I could say it was the mayor's office, I wish I could say it was GSD, but it's been OPS. It's been our officers in OPS that have been out there, showing up, suiting up, coming here, going to our city facilities, protecting those who need protection the most, the elderly, children at libraries and city facilities, or water treatment facilities that we all count on each and every day. These officers and the civilians that work with them have been the backbone of this city for years, and I want to make sure that they are recognized in this marriage. And I think it's a great thing to continue having them here, and wish them mazel tov, as we say. And I think this is, yes, we do, Mr. Garcetti. And so I think this is, while, you know, all marriages start off with a lot of questions and ambiguities, and trying to figure out who's doing what and what their roles are, I look at it as a great thing. It's a happy time, it's a fantastic thing for the city, for the residents of the city, and for the OPS officers. So just wanted to thank you all again, and make sure we do recognize all the hard work and effort that they continue to put in, and knowing that the frustration of having so many questions on the table, they go home every night, and with some answers, and probably more questions when they wake up than they went to sleep with. And that'll continue, and until we work all these things out. But I'll make sure that I'm committed to stay on top of it, to ensure that it is a smooth transition, those questions are answered and satisfied, not just answered, but satisfied, but that you are absolutely included as part of this marriage. So I want to say thank you for everything you continue to do. Thank you.
Okay, no more speakers in the, Mr. Corretts?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I, just for a second, as you all know, I objected to this all along, but I think LAPD has done a good job of easing my concerns. I think this will be done right, but I do just want to reiterate, I don't want to see any harm come to the officers and other folks that are in this department in any way. So I've heard a lot of that from other folks around the horseshoe, so I don't feel compelled to say much. I feel pretty confident that we will handle this in an appropriate way, but I just wanted to ask for that as I give you my eye vote.
Thank you for that, Mr. Corretts. We are all concerned about them, and we want to make sure that they're treated fairly. No more speakers on the queue. Let's prepare the vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we're going to go to item nine. Mr. Corretts, are you ready with item nine?
And for the record, for item nine, an amended motion has been circulated.
Okay, Mr. Alarcon.
Yeah, just have a point of information. I just want everybody to know that New York just passed the banking responsibility ordinance about 15 minutes ago.
So we got them.
But we were first.
All righty then. Thank you. Now we're on item nine, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you for your good work on this. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Alarcon on his leadership on the other issue, and being first, even if it's by a minute or two. For some time now, we've had a challenge with how to deal with the concerns of local businesses and the food truck industry across the city. In my district, on Santa Monica Boulevard and Westwood, we've had a unique situation where food trucks and other commercial vehicles were having an effect on a couple-block area with very few commercial parking spaces. And I'm glad to say that by working with the representatives of the food truck industry... And I'm glad to say that by working with representatives of the food truck industry and local businesses, we've come up with a solution that will allow the food trucks to continue to service the Atria West building while ensuring that other businesses are not negatively affected by excessive commercial vehicle activity. Based on the suggestion of the Transportation Commission, the principals involved in this issue met with our office and Brian Gallagher from DOT to work towards a better solution than initially proposed. I've circulated a motion which reflects the results of our meeting. We're moving forward with commercial vehicle restrictions on Santa Monica Boulevard, but we're making a special accommodation which will allow catering trucks to service the Atria West building. We're restricting parking before 11:00 a.m., so catering trucks will be able to arrive and not have to take other parking spaces. We've also extended the time those vehicles can park. They can now park for up to four hours without having to continually feed the meter or move. Additionally, we've determined that commercial loading and loading will be allowed in the rear of the building to accommodate deliveries and other businesses. It's my hope that commercial vehicles will be able to park in the front of the building after the catering trucks have departed in the two designated spaces. So I'd like to thank Brian Gallagher from DOT, the catering trucks and local businesses for meeting and coming up with a solution. I'd also like to ask that DOT report back to T Committee 120 days after the implementation of this solution on the success of these measures in resolving the parking problems in this area. And I ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Rosendorf.
Second, Mr. Coretts' motion back to the Transportation Committee for an update when that is done. And I want to thank you, Paul, for bringing the forces together and getting everybody on the same wavelength. It isn't easy, I know. The food truck issue is a big one for you, and it is for many of us around the horseshoe. So I appreciate your leadership, and we look forward in committee again to get an update when it's appropriate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, due to the fact that the motion was amended, we're going to allow public comment on this item, even though it was satisfied in committee, but based on the changes. So I'd like to call Philip Tate, Pamela Westhoff, and I think this is Jocelyn James. Please come forward.
Hi, good afternoon. Philip Tate with Shepherd Mallinick in Hampton, representing Atria West LLC, the owners of the building at 10635 Santa Monica Boulevard, most impacted by this resolution. Our tenants include a number of large corporations that do business in the city of Los Angeles, Black Entertainment Television, perhaps Blue Ribbon, Sony Music. And our goal as the landlord is to ensure that all of our tenants are able to efficiently and effectively carry out their business, so that they stay in the city of Los Angeles and in this building, paying business taxes to you. While we support the amendments and view them as a step in the right direction, we are still concerned that there could be some unintended consequences to this resolution. In particular, by eliminating the bulk of the commercial parking available on Santa Monica Boulevard in front of this commercial building, we think that this could hinder the ability for our tenants to receive deliveries, process pickups, and do the other things that they need to do to conduct their businesses, both for themselves and their service providers. We're also concerned that shifting these commercial deliveries to the alleyway that abuts the residential properties behind the building could cause additional issues with those residents. While we're encouraged by Councilman Coretts' request that the Department of Transportation report back in 120 days to review these items, our preference would be to hold this item for two weeks to try to resolve these issues before making the change. We are very appreciative of Councilman Coretts' efforts to address our concerns, and we feel that we're almost at a full resolution of them, and we thank both him and his staff for working with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Westhoff.
Ms. Westhoff and Ms. James are going to waive their time.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Leah Ross, and I am with Border Grill Restaurants and Truck. I was at the recent meeting with Council Coretts', Councilmember Coretts' staff and representatives of Atria West and BET, as well as the Department of Transportation representative. And I agree, it was a very constructive meeting. Thank you so much to all involved, and I do support the amendment to the motion. I also suggest that the amendment go one step further and do take into consideration the request of the Atria West Building Management about having an additional area for commercial vehicle parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone in the area working together to try and resolve this. We believe that this will solve the problems. If there's still difficulties at the 120-day mark, we'll review it, and there are things we can do to tweak this. And if we, if we spot real problems before then, then we'll, we'll try to make changes before then. We don't want to make this difficult for anyone, and our hope is that this works for everybody in the area. So with that, I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
And that's adopted as amended.
Okay, adopted as amended. That brings us to item 17.
Yes, item 17 calls for special for cards. And before we go there, Mr. President, there's a request to send item 10 forthwith.
Without objection. Okay, Mr. Murphy on item 17.
Yes, Mr. President, I support it, thank you.
No, thank you. So on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next.
Item 23 calls for special for cards.
Mr. Reyes, I didn't hear you.
Item 23 for one day.
Okay, without objection. Mr. City Attorney?
And for the record, there's some language that needs to be added to the agenda for tomorrow regarding the, outside counsel will be representing the city and not the DLA, and also to incorporate the CAO report that was submitted today.
So the best course of action would be to continue it till tomorrow?
Continue it with those additions onto the agenda.
All right, without objection, Mr. Reyes. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Item 26 calls for special for cards.
On item 26, Donna Peirman in the Valley and Miriam Fogler. Let's head to the Valley. Come on, Ms. Peirman.
I'm sorry, no, I forgot what number 26 is, sorry.
Take your time.
It was on that other special page.
It's Measure R.
Oh, Measure R, no wonder. Okay, yeah, we don't want to have, this is wrong, they, we want to, you're spending all the money over here on Measure R, on all these rail projects. In the meantime, we need to be able to fix a lot of the local buses and Orange Line bus. The Orange Line bus is packed up to the moon, and I don't know if this will be, I guess this is partially covered under Measure R, because they're talking about the extension. And I saw they had to pass by two wheelchairs because the Orange Lines are too crowded over on the weekends. So it's kind of crazy that we want to go, spending all our money. It takes four hours to take the Orange Line to go over to North Hollywood and back again. These buses are really bad buses, they, it can't be rapidly. I realize, I bet none of the council members really take it a consistent measure, because otherwise you would never be able to get anywhere you're going. And this Measure R, all it does is, is to birth the project on certain areas or certain rail projects, and takes it away from the normal local bus lines. Over here, it takes me an hour to get here, and we still got the problem over there where you can still only buy the bus pass only on one day. So if I don't have that one day, then I can, I'll go buy it. Yeah, it's going to take, it's going to make me two hours to get over to where you're at, to go downtown if you close down this conferencing down over here. At least two hours, and then I have to walk about four blocks, one way and then four blocks another way. So if it's, I'm disabled, that would be tough out of luck.
Thank you, Ms. Peirman, Ms. Mary Ann Fogler.
Yeah, this is a rat race, what you're doing. You know, she's, she's a pioneer with this public transit, she knows all about it, okay? She, I experienced it from her, and that's why I'm flangly opposed to what you're doing against all these taxes against us for paying for this public transit. I don't use it, but she uses it. But why should I be taxed for something I do not use? This is taxation without representation. Folks, do not vote in that Measure R tax that Antoni Villarrealza wants to put in so bad, he wants to cut off the San Fernando Valley, he put in succession, and won't let us have a video conferencing, he wants to make us ride the bus down there, two hours, go through, and I do not go on the ground, I will not. This is earthquake country, folks, we got a lot of fault lines, very bad, and methane gas. So this is, this thing, the bus system was the best here when I was a kid, the buses ran very well, 35 cents a ride, do as good, you know, and it's just not right, it's just not right what you're doing, you know? You're screwing us over, and you're making the transportation system worse and worse. You know, I have to go all the way around Dodger Stadium, go to Union Station to get a free ride to prevent myself from having to pay that $10 parking that Happy Magic Johnson decided to lower the, you know, the parking down there. Well, also, the security's another problem, that costs the city money. You know, you're giving them free security, they should be paying for it, the owners. And same thing with A and G.
Stay on the item, Ms. Fogler.
Well, you know what, you're, what you're doing, you're cutting down our, you're providing very inadequate service, very poor, and you're taxing the people out, you're taxing them to death. Vote no on the half-cent sales tax. Vote no on all this transportation repeal it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. No speakers in the queue on this item? Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, where are we at on today's agenda?
Counsel has motions for post and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, members' announcements? I'd like to ask everyone in the council chamber, oh, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the people of California for an additional 100 Pet Lovers license plates that were purchased. We're now up to just above 5,100 ordered. We need 7,500 total before they'll print the first one, so we can start saving our cats and dogs by spay and neutering them. And once again, a million dogs and cats come into our shelters in California, half of them do not make it out alive. Let's try to make California and Los Angeles a no-kill community, a no-kill state. And once again, thank, I want to thank the 100 people throughout California who bought their Pet Lovers license plate. And you can buy one by going to petloversplate.com. Please, please help us save our dogs and cats throughout California, and this is one way to do it voluntarily. The money goes to local government, so we can spay and neuter our dogs and cats. In addition to that, Mr. President?
Yeah, go right ahead.
In addition to that, we have, the California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is having a small business workshop in how to comply with the new healthcare law. Anybody and everyone is welcome. It is in two days, May 17, from 11:30 to 1:30 p.m. It's in Van Nuys at the Constituent Service Center at 6262 Van Nuys Boulevard. For those of you in the Valley, you know that area as the Van Nuys Civic Center on Van Nuys Boulevard, where the federal buildings are, state buildings, and also the courthouses. Again, 6262 Van Nuys Boulevard and the Marvin Browdy Building on the corner. Again, it's a free workshop on how to comply with the new healthcare laws, and it's given free by the California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. One of the speakers will be the chairman of the California Chamber of Commerce, will be here in LA to be part of the panel. In addition to that, we have David Chase from the Small Business Majority Community. In addition to that, it's important for us to note that anytime we can have a free seminar on how to comply with the law, especially for small business, you really should take advantage of it. Again, that's free. And also, on a personal note, I'd just like to thank my wife, Norma, for putting up with me for 20 years. Tomorrow's our anniversary.
Congratulations.
Did anybody disagree? No, no. She is putting up with me, okay.
You've been a great husband, is what I meant, so.
20 years, and hopefully we'll see another 20 and more. Thank you. 20 years, it's a long time.
Mr. Garcetti, before I call on you, I want to ask if Mr. Arnold Sachs is here? I was going to reconsider item 11, but since he is not here, I do not have to reconsider it. So Mr. Garcetti, and then you, Mr. Zahn.
Thank you. At 6:30 tonight at my district office at the corner of Hollywood and Western, we're having a workshop for folks who are interested in bringing solar power to Los Angeles, our new feed-in tariff. We're having an information session for property owners who want to put solar panels on their roofs and sell that power back to the city of Los Angeles. So from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at the corner of Hollywood and Western, come up to the building on the fourth floor at my district office. We'll be doing that with Department of Water and Power and hoping that people will sign up for our feed-in tariff, which means you can become a no-polluting or very low-polluting power source for the city of Los Angeles and create jobs right here in our basin. So I encourage you to attend that, and that is tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Zahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the Tarzana Property Owners Association is going to hold their annual town hall forum. Publics invited, Braymore Country Club, 4001 Reseda Boulevard, Top Reseda Boulevard, and the public is invited. Tarzana Property Owners Association Annual Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, everyone in the council chambers, please rise. Do we have adjourning motions, members? Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you've all likely heard, Vidal Sassoon passed away in his home in Los Angeles last Wednesday at the age of 84. Last year, I was pleased and proud to bring him to the city council, where we recognized him for his brilliant professional achievements and many good deeds and charitable endeavors. I know that he and his wife, Ronnie, were greatly moved by the kind words that many of you said about him, and he also said some nice things in return, including complimenting Janice Hahn on her hair, which I think she greatly appreciated. He led an extraordinary life and had equally extraordinary effect on the world. And we know mostly through his fantastic career in the world of hairstyling, and certainly he changed how women look with exciting hairstyles that didn't demand a lot of care. But he was also an important supporter of, and champion of many humanitarian and artistic causes. He spent his years in an orphanage and grew up in poverty, as well as in the midst of war. He survived the bombs of the London Blitz, even while he was apprenticing to learn the tools of the trade that he would certainly master thereafter. Feisty and defiant, he joined a British anti-fascist organization and eventually fought in Israel's War of Independence. He was a champion of numerous causes, including spearheading the campaign Hairdressers Unlocking Hope, that raised millions of dollars to help Habitat for Humanity build homes after Hurricane Katrina devastated the New Orleans area. In 1982, he founded the Vidal Sassoon International Center for the Study of Anti-Semitism and Related Bigotries at Hebrew University in Jerusalem. He also provided aid for the elderly and medical aid for the underprivileged, and was a staunch advocate for the arts. He's survived by his wife, Ronnie, and three children, and he leaves us all with a very enduring legacy.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Rosendorf requested to, in fact, all members, all members on that.
That'd be great.
Other adjourning motions, members? This council meeting is adjourned.